What does it mean when we say we are preparing students for their future? What does it mean when we say we are preparing students for their future? What does it mean when we say we are preparing students for their future? Here at the Clark County School District, it means providing every student with the Here at the Clark County School District, it means providing every student with the Here at the Clark County School District, it means providing every student with the tools tools to dream big and achieve even bigger. tools to dream big and achieve even bigger. to dream big and achieve even bigger. So, welcome to Career and Technical Education, where we make possibilities become realities. So, welcome to Career and Technical Education, where we make possibilities become realities. So, welcome to Career and Technical Education, where we make possibilities become realities. Come on, let me show you. Come on, let me show you. Come on, let me show you. CTE isn't just a program, it's a journey. CTE isn't just a program, it's a journey. CTE isn't just a program, it's a journey. Across Clark County, students are exploring careers in engineering, Across Clark County, students are exploring careers in engineering, Across Clark County, students are exploring careers in engineering, healthcare, 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 the arts, the arts, the arts, and so much more. and so much more. and so much more. The CTE framework features six distinct clusters, each offering unique pathways toward The CTE framework features six distinct clusters, each offering unique pathways toward The CTE framework features six distinct clusters, each offering unique pathways toward a shared objective: student success. a shared objective: student success. a shared objective: student success. Within these clusters, students can explore more than 60 diverse programs of study. Within these clusters, students can explore more than 60 diverse programs of study. Within these clusters, students can explore more than 60 diverse programs of study. With such a wide range of options, CTE truly has something to offer every student. With such a wide range of options, CTE truly has something to offer every student. With such a wide range of options, CTE truly has something to offer every student. Like prepping our future doctors, to giving students hands-on learning with cutting-edge Like prepping our future doctors, to giving students hands-on learning with cutting-edge Like prepping our future doctors, to giving students hands-on learning with cutting-edge technology, to the trades. technology, to the trades. technology, to the trades. Our programs are vast, with a range of skills students will gain from them. Our programs are vast, with a range of skills students will gain from them. Our programs are vast, with a range of skills students will gain from them.
CTE is about showing students that their future starts here. CTE is about showing students that their future starts here. CTE is about showing students that their future starts here. It's not just skills. It's not just skills. It's not just skills. They're learning to lead, innovate, and thrive. They're learning to lead, innovate, and thrive. They're learning to lead, innovate, and thrive.
Through hands-on learning and real-world experiences, our students graduate ready Through hands-on learning and real-world experiences, our students graduate ready Through hands-on learning and real-world experiences, our students graduate ready for what's next, whether it's college, a career, or both. for what's next, whether it's college, a career, or both. for what's next, whether it's college, a career, or both. Ninety-one percent of CTE students say their programs better prepared them for their future. Ninety-one percent of CTE students say their programs better prepared them for their future. Ninety-one percent of CTE students say their programs better prepared them for their future.
With internships certification and college credit, CTE students gain more than knowledge. With internships certification and college credit, CTE students gain more than knowledge. With internships certification and college credit, CTE students gain more than knowledge.
They gain a head start. They gain a head start. They gain a head start.
My CTE classes have showed me that I can make a difference in healthcare. My CTE classes have showed me that I can make a difference in healthcare. My CTE classes have showed me that I can make a difference in healthcare. And now, I'm on my way to become a physical therapist. And now, I'm on my way to become a physical therapist. And now, I'm on my way to become a physical therapist.
My CTE class taught me skills that I never thought I would use, but now that I'm here, My CTE class taught me skills that I never thought I would use, but now that I'm here, My CTE class taught me skills that I never thought I would use, but now that I'm here, I might use them in the near future. I might use them in the near future. I might use them in the near future.
My CTE classes showed me that I can make a difference in medicine, and now, I'm on My CTE classes showed me that I can make a difference in medicine, and now, I'm on My CTE classes showed me that I can make a difference in medicine, and now, I'm on my way to medical school. my way to medical school. my way to medical school.
CTE is more than education. CTE is more than education. CTE is more than education. It's inspiration, it's opportunity, and it's happening right here in Clark County. It's inspiration, it's opportunity, and it's happening right here in Clark County. It's inspiration, it's opportunity, and it's happening right here in Clark County. Explore the possibilities. Explore the possibilities. Explore the possibilities. Visit cteinccsd.org today and discover how CTE can shape your future. Visit cteinccsd.org today and discover how CTE can shape your future. Visit cteinccsd.org today and discover how CTE can shape your future. Because at CCSD, we're not just preparing students for tomorrow, we're preparing them Because at CCSD, we're not just preparing students for tomorrow, we're preparing them Because at CCSD, we're not just preparing students for tomorrow, we're preparing them to lead. to lead. to lead. What does it mean when we say we are preparing students for their future? What does it mean when we say we are preparing students for their future? What does it mean when we say we are preparing students for their future? Here at the Clark County School District, it means providing every student with the Here at the Clark County School District, it means providing every student with the Here at the Clark County School District, it means providing every student with the tools to dream big and achieve even bigger. tools to dream big and achieve even bigger. tools to dream big and achieve even bigger. So, welcome to Career and Technical Education, where we make possibilities become realities. So, welcome to Career and Technical Education, where we make possibilities become realities. So, welcome to Career and Technical Education, where we make possibilities become realities. Come on, let me show you. Come on, let me show you. Come on, let me show you. CTE isn't just a program, it's a journey. CTE isn't just a program, it's a journey. CTE isn't just a program, it's a journey. Across Clark County, students are exploring careers in engineering, Across Clark County, students are exploring careers in engineering, Across Clark County, students are exploring careers in engineering, healthcare, 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 the arts, the arts, the arts, and so much more. and so much more. and so much more. The CTE framework features six distinct clusters, each offering unique pathways toward The CTE framework features six distinct clusters, each offering unique pathways toward The CTE framework features six distinct clusters, each offering unique pathways toward a shared objective: student success. a shared objective: student success. a shared objective: student success. Within these clusters, students can explore more than 60 diverse programs of study. Within these clusters, students can explore more than 60 diverse programs of study. Within these clusters, students can explore more than 60 diverse programs of study. With such a wide range of options, CTE truly has something to offer every student. With such a wide range of options, CTE truly has something to offer every student. With such a wide range of options, CTE truly has something to offer every student. Like prepping our future doctors, to giving students hands-on learning with cutting-edge Like prepping our future doctors, to giving students hands-on learning with cutting-edge Like prepping our future doctors, to giving students hands-on learning with cutting-edge technology, to the trades. technology, to the trades. technology, to the trades. Our programs are vast, with a range of skills students will gain from them. Our programs are vast, with a range of skills students will gain from them. Our programs are vast, with a range of skills students will gain from them.
CTE is about showing students that their future starts here. CTE is about showing students that their future starts here. CTE is about showing students that their future starts here. It's not just skills. It's not just skills. It's not just skills. They're learning to lead, innovate, and thrive. They're learning to lead, innovate, and thrive. They're learning to lead, innovate, and thrive.
Through hands-on learning and real-world experiences, our students graduate ready Through hands-on learning and real-world experiences, our students graduate ready Through hands-on learning and real-world experiences, our students graduate ready for what's next, whether it's college, a career, or both. for what's next, whether it's college, a career, or both. for what's next, whether it's college, a career, or both. Ninety-one percent of CTE students say their programs better prepared them for their future. Ninety-one percent of CTE students say their programs better prepared them for their future. Ninety-one percent of CTE students say their programs better prepared them for their future.
With internships certification and college credit, CTE students gain more than knowledge. With internships certification and college credit, CTE students gain more than knowledge. With internships certification and college credit, CTE students gain more than knowledge.
They gain a head start. They gain a head start. They gain a head start.
My CTE classes have showed me that I can make a difference in healthcare. My CTE classes have showed me that I can make a difference in healthcare. My CTE classes have showed me that I can make a difference in healthcare. And now, I'm on my way to become a physical therapist. And now, I'm on my way to become a physical therapist. And now, I'm on my way to become a physical therapist.
My CTE class taught me skills that I never thought I would use, but now that I'm here, My CTE class taught me skills that I never thought I would use, but now that I'm here, My CTE class taught me skills that I never thought I would use, but now that I'm here, I might use them in the near future. I might use them in the near future. I might use them in the near future.
My CTE classes showed me that I can make a difference in medicine, and now, I'm on My CTE classes showed me that I can make a difference in medicine, and now, I'm on My CTE classes showed me that I can make a difference in medicine, and now, I'm on my way to medical school. my way to medical school. my way to medical school.
CTE is more than education. CTE is more than education. CTE is more than education. It's inspiration, it's opportunity, and it's happening right here in Clark County. It's inspiration, it's opportunity, and it's happening right here in Clark County. It's inspiration, it's opportunity, and it's happening right here in Clark County. Explore the possibilities. Explore the possibilities. Explore the possibilities. Visit cteinccsd.org today and discover how CTE can shape your future. Visit cteinccsd.org today and discover how CTE can shape your future. Visit cteinccsd.org today and discover how CTE can shape your future. Because at CCSD, we're not just preparing students for tomorrow, we're preparing them Because at CCSD, we're not just preparing students for tomorrow, we're preparing them Because at CCSD, we're not just preparing students for tomorrow, we're preparing them to lead. to lead. to lead.
One of the schools that performed at this year's State of the Schools address was Gilbert One of the schools that performed at this year's State of the Schools address was Gilbert One of the schools that performed at this year's State of the Schools address was Gilbert Academy of Creative Arts. Academy of Creative Arts. Academy of Creative Arts. We had the chance to visit this North Las Vegas elementary school, and we met some We had the chance to visit this North Las Vegas elementary school, and we met some We had the chance to visit this North Las Vegas elementary school, and we met some very very talented students and staff. very talented students and staff. talented students and staff.
Let's go from the top.
Let's go from the top.
Let's go from the top.
Today, we worked with Chromatics, which was our instrument group, and some of our Today, we worked with Chromatics, which was our instrument group, and some of our Today, we worked with Chromatics, which was our instrument group, and some of our members of Collage, which is our choir, and they were creating movements to go along members of Collage, which is our choir, and they were creating movements to go along members of Collage, which is our choir, and they were creating movements to go along with an instrument piece that Chromatics has been practicing. with an instrument piece that Chromatics has been practicing. with an instrument piece that Chromatics has been practicing.
One of my dream jobs is to be a singer or songwriter, and maybe even actor. One of my dream jobs is to be a singer or songwriter, and maybe even actor. One of my dream jobs is to be a singer or songwriter, and maybe even actor. I like when the audience kind of sees me doing it, especially when my mom's in there, I like when the audience kind of sees me doing it, especially when my mom's in there, I like when the audience kind of sees me doing it, especially when my mom's in there, because she's always proud of me and stuff. because she's always proud of me and stuff. because she's always proud of me and stuff.
Okay, third grade.
Okay, third grade.
Okay, third grade.
So what we're gonna do is we're gonna start on page three with Agent Holly and Agent Nikkel.
So what we're gonna do is we're gonna start on page three with Agent Holly and Agent Nikkel.
So what we're gonna do is we're gonna start on page three with Agent Holly and Agent Nikkel.
Can you guys go get set up right over there?
Can you guys go get set up right over there?
Can you guys go get set up right over there?
And then, we'll continue on to the computer nerds.
And then, we'll continue on to the computer nerds.
And then, we'll continue on to the computer nerds.
And I wanna be an actor when I grow up, so I moved to this school so I can act and
And I wanna be an actor when I grow up, so I moved to this school so I can act and
And I wanna be an actor when I grow up, so I moved to this school so I can act and show people my talent and just let people know what I want to do when I am older.
show people my talent and just let people know what I want to do when I am older.
show people my talent and just let people know what I want to do when I am older.
You get different prompts, and you have to express different emotions at different You get different prompts, and you have to express different emotions at different You get different prompts, and you have to express different emotions at different times in the show. times in the show. times in the show. It's really hard to memorize your script without a script paper to see and know your It's really hard to memorize your script without a script paper to see and know your It's really hard to memorize your script without a script paper to see and know your flows. flows. flows.
As I was growing up, the arts were always a big part of my life. As I was growing up, the arts were always a big part of my life. As I was growing up, the arts were always a big part of my life. I really just want to be able to influence students to understand how art is really I really just want to be able to influence students to understand how art is really I really just want to be able to influence students to understand how art is really a part of our everyday lives, and how that can really infiltrate our academics, and a part of our everyday lives, and how that can really infiltrate our academics, and a part of our everyday lives, and how that can really infiltrate our academics, and as we integrate them, how much of a deeper understanding our students can have for the as we integrate them, how much of a deeper understanding our students can have for the as we integrate them, how much of a deeper understanding our students can have for the curriculum itself. curriculum itself. curriculum itself.
You can move through the space. You can move through the space. You can move through the space. I want you to, the Metalicons, get ready to play your improvisation. I want you to, the Metalicons, get ready to play your improvisation. I want you to, the Metalicons, get ready to play your improvisation. And then, you guys do something with your prop and see how many different ways you And then, you guys do something with your prop and see how many different ways you And then, you guys do something with your prop and see how many different ways you can can move it. can move it. move it.
Elementary kids learn how to communicate confidently when they participate in the Elementary kids learn how to communicate confidently when they participate in the Elementary kids learn how to communicate confidently when they participate in the arts. 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 They learn how to collaborate and work together as part of an ensemble when they play or They learn how to collaborate and work together as part of an ensemble when they play or They learn how to collaborate and work together as part of an ensemble when they play or sing or act together. sing or act together. sing or act together.
And how's that gonna help them when they're adults? And how's that gonna help them when they're adults? And how's that gonna help them when they're adults?
Every person at some point will have to stand up in front of a group of people Every person at some point will have to stand up in front of a group of people Every person at some point will have to stand up in front of a group of people and lead a meeting or give a speech, and this is a great way for kids to learn how and lead a meeting or give a speech, and this is a great way for kids to learn how and lead a meeting or give a speech, and this is a great way for kids to learn how to do that, even if they're nervous, to learn how to be confident when they perform. to do that, even if they're nervous, to learn how to be confident when they perform. to do that, even if they're nervous, to learn how to be confident when they perform. We believe that every child is capable of creating beautiful music and movement, and We believe that every child is capable of creating beautiful music and movement, and We believe that every child is capable of creating beautiful music and movement, and it doesn't matter what the level of talent is, they're gonna grow from where they are. it doesn't matter what the level of talent is, they're gonna grow from where they are. it doesn't matter what the level of talent is, they're gonna grow from where they are.
Bravo, phenomenal job. Bravo, phenomenal job. Bravo, phenomenal job. Thank you to Gilbert Academy for inviting us to learn more about your wonderful school. Thank you to Gilbert Academy for inviting us to learn more about your wonderful school. Thank you to Gilbert Academy for inviting us to learn more about your wonderful school. One of the schools that performed at this year's... One of the schools that performed at this year's... One of the schools that performed at this year's...
Good afternoon, that's actually evening. Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and start the meeting. I would, my name is Irebus Amonat Adams. I get the privilege of serving as the president for this board. Calling the meeting to order on February 13th, 2025, the time is 5:01 PM. Would like to remind everyone to silence your electronic devices. We acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the territorial homeland of the Njuu, the Moappa Band of Paiyuts, and the Las Vegas Band of Paiyuts. I'm gonna turn it over to Trustee Zamora for some remarks first.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would just like to take a moment to take 30 seconds of silence in remembrance of our North Las Vegas police officer. We can just have quiet? Thank you, everyone.
Everyone to stand. We're gonna do the presentation of colors by Clark High School ROTC, and then have, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Trustee Barron.
Wait, everyone, please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I'm gonna turn it over to Trustee Zamora for some remarks.
Hello again, everyone. We have great news, colleagues. We have our mic situation working. I quickly wanted to kind of make sure everyone knew how to work our mic system. We have, it's been an interesting trip, I think, to get here. So now, moving forward, when you want to get on the queue, you will press the right button to get on the queue, and then, you will immediately press the left button to mute yourself, so the mic will stay muted until you're ready to speak. The one thing I want to flag is that our system will only hold in the queue eight people at a time. So if you press your button and it starts flashing, just please be aware that it's probably full, you're gonna have to wait a few folks to talk, and then, try to get yourself back in the queue. I'm here if there's any issues, so we don't have to use our paddles or anything. Any questions for my colleagues? All right, thank you.
Thank you to the public as we work through some new things that we are trying as a team. So now, I would go to adoption of the agenda before I open item 1.02. Is there anyone who did not get a chance to complete the public comment card? It's these yellow cards that are located throughout and some up here up front. Okay, I do not see anyone, um, a public comment card for item 1.02. So then, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Trustee Cabazos.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I would like to make a motion to adopt the agenda and the amended agenda with the following change. Revised reference material has been provided for item 2.22, Grants, Applications, Multiple Recurring Grants, Various Funding Agencies. The revised reference material reflects the removal of three grants from the list of grants for which the board is being asked to authorize application, including Clean School Bus Rebate Program funded by the United States Department of Environmental Protection Agency, Electric School Buses Incentive Program funded by Nevada Energy, Electric School Buses Incentive Program funded by the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection.
Thank you. I have a motion to, by Trustee Cabazos. Do I have a second? I have, um, Trustee Barron.
Yes, I'd like to second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Trustee Cabazos, a second by Trustee Barron. If you would cast your vote. Okay, that motion passes six to zero with one no. So next, we will move to the consent agenda items. So here, I'd also like if there, I have two people that want to speak on the consent agenda items. Is there any other public comment for this section? Okay, I'll close that. I'll go ahead and ask, Mr. Bayless, would you like to come forward? There you are. Any chair. Well, go to the mic. Thank you so much.
Hi, Mr. Bayless, for the record, James Bayless. I was mainly just speaking on 221. I actually want to congratulate the people that finally got through that major obstacle course for your guys' um, I think you guys are actually doing a settlement for somebody. I know how that labyrinth maze goes. I actually congratulate them for getting through that. Actually congratulate them for getting through that. But I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that Mr. Ibahara has made now a third council drop me. I'm now pro se again, which means we're in a situation, they're pretty much making it like whether if I don't have paper up or paperwork, which since you guys made Crystal not be around me, I have a hard time doing that paperwork. So here's the issue where we're at. I just figure it's pretty much pertinent to this. I've been trying to settle, but nobody wants to answer our phone. But the situation is, is if they do the withdrawal like you guys are planning on doing, it elevates to the UK, which means then it becomes an international issue. I don't think you want that, because then all the new people are in hot water. We're trying to resolve this and get rid of the old people and get rid of the problems. We shouldn't make new ones. Just putting that out there. You guys have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Bayless. Dr. Bimmel?
Good evening. Tiffany Bimmel for the record. I'm not sure if this is the correct spot to talk about the minutes from the last meeting, but I did want to quickly mention that we were able to clarify the DECA funds that were voted on by you all. In spite of the fact that trustee E. wished you had more time to actually review the funds you were voting on distributing, while DECA is an amazing organization and has excellent leadership in Curtis Haley, it's a bit disproportionate when private schools snowball everyone else involved and sweep the competition. Perhaps equity did die in this space a long time ago. With regard to 2.02, the Algebra and Geometry Participation Plan, I don't know why these always end up in consent agenda and/or when they get discussed. I just want to know if it's like at work sessions? This data shows participation and not success or pass rates. Is that purposeful? How are you showing that this program of thrusting middle school students into higher level math is successful? I'm watching ninth graders take Algebra I for the second time because they did not find success in eighth grade, and they tell me they're just dumb in math, they're not smart enough, not good enough, they're failures. It's saddening and it breaks my heart. Sure, there are students who can handle this level of rigor, but the data you have in this report doesn't show the success of your participation rates as far as I can see, nor does it show the number of these almost 10,000 students who attend and whether they attend sorry Magnet versus Comprehensive Middle Schools. Some data points do matter. Your data is very limited and limiting reports when it shows the participation. I mean, I participated in watching the Super Bowl. Does that mean I get a championship ring because I rooted for the Eagles? I get that's a facetious statement, but I hope you see what I'm trying to say with regard to getting actual data points that show that this forced math upgrade might be doing more harm than good for our students, and that parsing out this data might actually be more skewing in your favor. The test result data doesn't show that we actually have any results from this, right? It's not going well for math in our district. How many of these almost 10,000 middle school students attended Magnet Elementary Schools and matriculated to Magnet Middle Schools? How many went from Comprehensive Elementary Schools to Magnet Middle Schools? How many came from private schools to Magnet Middle Schools? And how many Comprehensive Middle Schools are offering Algebra I and Geometry? The numbers need to mean something more than just 7,000 plus are in Algebra I and 1,300 plus are in Geometry. Sorry. To qualify, your statistical data studies and prove that this push for higher level math in younger years is worth the investment, risk, and stress it's putting on our students, especially those who think they're dumb and stupid because they're taking Algebra I again in ninth grade. Also, the North Las Vegas officer's name is Jason Roskow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bimmel. And now, a question for our legal counsel. I do have two public speaker cards. Both are items on 2.22, which we removed from applying for those grants. So is it still necessary for us to hear the item or hear the public comment?
So, I'm sorry, so the comment cards indicated they wanted to speak on an agenda item that has been removed and is no longer before the board?
Correct.
Then yeah, I would recommend that that not be an appropriate time for public comment.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. Ivan. Oh, Ms. Yvonne, we will not be hearing those. You could still fill out a public comment card for the end. Item's not listed on the agenda, and I could take it then if you'd like. No, I can't. She's saying, no, I can't.
Madam President, for the record, Brenda Larson Mitchell. 2.22 has not been pulled. There were items within 2.22 that have been pulled.
Oh, yes, but the public comment card says that they specifically wanted to talk about the clean energy buses.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. So then, legal counsel, then could those two individuals speak at the end for items not listed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I could hold it for then. Thank you for that clarity. Okay, so then, on agenda item 2 point, what is the public? The consent agenda item, I would entertain a motion, and I'm going to ask trustee Stevens to make the motion.
I'd like to motion to pull item 2.10 from the consent agenda to discuss among the board before we approve the consent agenda. It's the minutes?
So 2.10 is a memorandum of agreement between the Clark County School District and Teach for America. And so, we will vote on that. The way the process works is a trustee can pull an item. They, we don't need a second, but we do need to vote for the, from the board in order to pull that item. So I'm waiting for the screen to go up. Trustee Cavazos, would you like to cast your vote? Okay, that, I have a sixth with a one no. And so then, we're going to go ahead and hear agenda, consent agenda item 2.10. So, super interim superintendent. Trusted Biasadi?
I, President, I would like to make a motion to pull an item, also from the consent agenda.
Okay.
And that is item 2.02, Focus 2024 Strategic Plan Update, Algebra I and Geometry Participation in Middle School.
Okay, I have that, and I know that we're in training as a team. I just want to let the public know that the way that it happens is that we give advance notice on the agenda items to be pulled so that we have a chance to maybe rectify it before, or we don't, we give the interim superintendent advance notice to have her team here. So I'm going to ask the interim superintendent, do you have your team here to be able to ask questions on item 2.02?
Madam President, members of the board, yes, the team is prepared to answer questions.
Okay, awesome. So then, I'm going to ask for the vote. Also being motion to pull item 2.02 for discussion. If you could bring up the casting of our votes. Okay, that's four yeses and three nos, so the majority goes forward, and we will hear item 2.02. We'll first start with item 2.10, which is the memorandum agreement between the Clark County School District and Teach for America. So interim superintendent, I don't know which team members are here.
Madam President, members of the board, we have Ms. Triana, Chief of Human Resources, and members of the team here to answer questions. Thank you.
Please proceed, and this is, it's not formal. You can go directly to the members if they ask questions.
Testing. Okay. My name is Rowan Triana. I serve as the Human Resource Officer for the Clark County School District, and I'm going to go ahead and let the team introduce themselves. These are partners in the work.
My name is Colin McNaut. I am the principal of Simma Memorial High School, also a 2013 core member for Teach for America.
Dana Crowley, Director II, Talent Recruitment and Teacher Pathways in the Human Resources Unit.
Yuria Costa, Teach for America, Head of Development.
Okay, so we're going to start with questions. Trustee Stevens?
Thank you. So, the reason why I wanted to pull this is because I'm getting a lot of feedback from our constituents. The community is a little, I think confused is a good word, on why we're seeing during this budget season, a lot of our teachers are being surplused in our schools. I'm getting feedback, it's some schools are having to surplus, you know, between four and five educators from their schools. And so, when this came across the agenda that, you know, there's an opportunity to continue this contract and bring on another 65 educators and spend money on this, it became questionable in the sense of how are we, how are we supposed to be, you know, hiring and spending more money on more educators from Teach for America when we are surplusing our own educators already in our schools? That seems to be a very, very big question and a very big concern, and so I just wondered if you guys could shed some light on that and help us understand that a little bit better.
Okay, I'll go ahead and take that question. Trustee Stevens, thank you so much. So in terms of the surplus, while one school might be surplusing a couple teachers, we still have a school down the street that will have vacancies. Chances are, I believe we haven't been fully staffed since 1994, and we are currently sitting on about 800 vacancies right now. And so, this 65 new hire is really, hate to say it, but it's a drop in the bucket. And I will speak also as a former principal in very tough schools to staff prior to COVID, being Gibson Middle School, Western High School, Eldorado High School. TFA really helped me staff positions where people were not lining up to sign up, let's just say that. And so, I have that firsthand experience with TFA. When nobody else was lining up, they, they sent me people to help staff my classrooms. And so, the other part of that, I know that some of the questions come from teachers in Title I schools, right? So we have some Title I schools that are Title I, but then we have some Title I schools that are very, very heavy Title I schools. Over, over half the schools in the Clark County School District are Title I. So while you have, I'm just going to keep it real, as you, Title I light, they might be surpassing, but then we have a very intense need at another school, say in North Las Vegas, that has 20 vacancies. So they might be losing some, but we will have plenty of jobs to go around. So this 65, I think, again, is going to help us reach that zero vacancy dream.
Any other questions? Trustee Stevens?
So what would, well, one of the questions, another question I've heard is, when you read the contract, what might be a little confusing even for me is understanding the pay structure. We're seeing, we're seeing what we would spend on TFA to recruit and hire these 65 educators. Are they paid at a different rate or a lesser rate than our currently, current educators?
I'll go ahead and take that. Team, correct me if I need to add any details. So when we hire these teachers, hopefully, they will be paid just like everybody else. And that recruitment fee, you see that 2,000 for the first year, 2750 for the second year. It's what we pay TFA. Typically, across the nation, the average cost to hire a teacher in a large urban school district is approximately 20,000. So that 4750, you know, while it is an investment, it certainly isn't 20,000.
So, just to clarify, what you're saying is, is we would be, we would be taking on 65 educators from TFA, and that our current educators that are being surplused in certain schools, they're not necessarily, they're not losing their jobs, the school district would like to place them where there is a higher need. So it's not that we have, it's not that people are getting fired per se or getting, you know, laid off, it's that, that those schools, according to their budgets or their enrollment, it's different than the need in other schools, and so you're trying to fill those gaps? Is that?
Principal McNaut would like to answer that question.
Just because I get to sit here today. So trustee Stevens, Colin McNaut, principal of Simma Memorial High School for the record. And so, my understanding of that process is that the surplus teachers will be selecting their school prior to the placement of Teach for America teachers. In the event that there are not enough slots, and I suppose in a really good situation that there are not enough slots for the Teach for America teachers, it is my understanding that the remaining core members end up being placed potentially at other schools, charters, things like that, that may be in need of that. Speaking as a hiring principal, I have three math vacancies going into next school year, and I know I'm going to struggle to hire that. I am relying on Teach for America to hopefully bring me some math teachers to help support. This school year, I have four core members, two in their second year and two in their first year. Two of them are math teachers, and we're filling a vacancy that would have otherwise been filled by a license, a long-term sub for this school year. So I think it's definitely an investment to ensure that we have high-quality licensed educators in the classrooms. And those teachers tend to stay beyond the two years. Case in point, me. I was placed here in 2013 with the intention of doing two years and leaving, fell in love with Las Vegas, fell in love with this community, fell in love with a teacher down the hall, and am now married to that teacher, and am the principal of my placement school. With, with, so. And so, it's, it's an investment in that as well, in the, in the commitment over the, not just the two years. But as a hiring principal, I do have concerns about being able to fill the math vacancies at my school. It's reassuring to know that Teach for America will potentially be bringing math teachers in to fill that vacancy. But just to make sure I directly answer your question, the surplus teachers will go through that process prior to the placement of Teach for America teachers. So any surplus teacher will find a home, in theory, prior to the Teach for America teachers being placed.
Thank you. I have one final question. I'll open it up to the rest of the board, so I'm sorry, I'm taking up all of this. But my, my other question is, I noticed in the contract, and maybe you guys can help me with this, but I noticed in the contract that it says that it's a two-year, right? But it has an automatic renewal. And so, what concerns me about that is the ability for this board to, especially with, we're in the middle of a session right now where we're hoping to get more funding for educators, and we're in the process of hiring a new superintendent. There's, there's a big possibility, we'd like to look at this contract again, not in four years, but maybe in two, or maybe next year, or whatever. So I just want to know, and maybe this is a question for counsel, if we have the ability to do that? Is that an amendment we can make, or did I miss something in the contract where, where we would be allowed to do that?
Thank you for that question. Interim Superintendent?
Madam President, members of the board, my understanding is on page eight, letter F, little two double I's, that by either party, upon 30 days prior written notice to the other party, provided that the terminating party provides that notice no later than 120 days prior to the end of the current academic year. So there are those clauses in the contract.
Thank you. Trustee Biasadi? Trustee Johnson? Oh, who's in there? Am I going from the top? Yeah, trustee Johnson.
I just wanted to see if anybody could help to, you know, one of the things you described was filling the need, which is incredibly important, and then, Principal McNaut, you also talked about how you've stayed over the two years, and I'm sure that there you have other colleagues from your corps or from previous corps who've stayed and obviously done additional good work. Can someone describe what this investment looks like, not just for the short term, but for the long term, and how the investment isn't just the dollars that we're putting today, but that investment looks, what that investment looks like over time and how it compounds and provides not just teacher support, but then also... then also additional ripples in the system?
Madam President, Members of the Board, Interim Superintendent Larson Mitchell, Trustee Johnson, I just wanted to highlight some things that I think will show the long-term effects. So, currently in CCSD right now, we still have 350 TFA teachers on staff. We have 16 assistant principals. We have 10 principals, including Principal McNaut next to me. And their average retention is 86%. So, that just, I think, shows, speaks that after the two years, not just like Principal McNaut, but they are staying, they are investing in our community and, you know, putting down roots.
Thank you. Did you want to add something?
Yeah. It's 11 principals, three of those principals lead Title, three of those principals have a five or four star rating in their schools. And, and of the 11 that we have here, seven are Title I schools. So, it's, we, we focus since the beginning on placing them on a Title I. That's something in the contract. We don't want our teachers to be placed somewhere else. And they often stay in a Title I school.
Thank you so much for the information. Trustee Asparza Stroffigan?
Thank you. First, I don't know if anyone noticed, but we do have student artwork. It's a welcome vision for us to acknowledge our kids. I'm sorry I had to acknowledge that. So, I want to, I want to ask you, the caliber of candidate that comes from Teach for, for America matters. So, I want to know, can you give a nice description why these particular individuals are so unique to coming to this profession? And also, we talked about the retention, but I want to ask you about something second. But, first, first question.
We're kind of passionate about this, can you tell? So, first off, this year, 24/25, we have about 72% of our TFA members are of color. And so, I think that is huge because, you know, they look like the kids that they serve. And I will tell you, as a former principal, my experience with TFA, and I can only speak for the ones that I got to work alongside, they had high expectations for my students. They never made excuses. They knew that no matter what your ZIP code was, or what you, you were going to rock it. And so, I fell in love with them as a principal. I did not know what TFA was before I was a principal at Gibson Middle School. And like I said, they helped me staff my school, and I just became a fan ever since. And I carried that over to Western and also Eldorado. So, handed over to Principal McNaut.
Trust, sorry, President Bustamante Adams, Trustee Asparza Stroffigan, Interim Superintendent Larson Mitchell. It's my first time doing that, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, well, Colin McNaut, prin, I, I kind of wanted to say it, so I appreciate the opportunity to do that. So, Colin McNaut, Principal Simran Memorial for the record. And like I said, a core member from 2013. And so, I think to your question, a couple, couple parts to that. First of all, the, many of the Teach for America core members are entering either from the workforce or straight out of college, right? And so, they're bringing an excitement and an energy to the, the profession that I think is very needed and necessary, and reflects in the students, right? I am always first in line, not just because I was a, a core member, but because I know the caliber of candidate that's coming out of this program. I'm always first in line, asking every year, HR, please put me on top of the list to make sure that I get a core member or two. And then I ask for three or four more, because I think they, they bring such a great energy to the school. Insofar as last summer, I was the, one of the hosting principals of the summer training program, which is, I think, Item 2.09. And I jumped at that opportunity because I wanted that energy with the students at Simran Memorial, right? And I mean, the, the result of the summer was phenomenal, right? I mean, I had 121 students participated in the program. All of them demonstrated mastery and earned credit, making up, you know, the credit from the school year. And around 70% of them were then successful this year in first quarter, or first semester, passing the subsequent class. So, for example, if they took English IX in the summer, they passed English X, right, where that was not the trend for them the year prior, right? And I think a lot of that, the students would attribute that to the energy and the excitement that the, the students felt from the core members last summer. Many of them were reporting to me, Mr. McNaut is the best teacher I ever had. Mr. McNaut, are you hiring this teacher? Because you need to, you know. And I got a lot of that candid comment throughout the summer, which I think speaks to the caliber of candidate coming through. And then those candidates staying and continuing on in leadership, right? I think we spoke to a lot of core members who are moving on into leadership roles, both in Clark County, some at the Nevada Legislature right now, and advocating for the, the success of our students, so.
Principal McNaut, thank you for that personal connection. And speaking of the legislation, one of our BDRs is to retain teachers. And I'd like to hear from whomever in the group, how TFA retains their teachers, because there's a lot of intentionality in the onboarding and the professional learning and the community that they build. And so, I want to speak to, what is that return on investment? Because the amount of money that our HR, Ms. Triana expressed was a big price tag. So, how are they, I think there's some hidden costs that TFA is absorbing in their onboarding and in their retention for how they do alumni events?
Members of the Board, thank you for that question. During the first two years, we do a lot of training and coaching. They have a coach that goes with them to the classroom. So, it's, it's a constant support, which allows them to enjoy more their experience, stay, and plus the community where they're at. A lot of teachers go, and they're the only teacher, they're the new teacher. Here, they come in as a community. One of the things that we try is to also put them in groups, so that they can build that community in one school. After the two years, they become alumni. Since 2017, we started a strong alumni programming, where we continue developing those teachers who want to stay in the classroom, or who want to go into leadership in the school, at the school system, or a system at the system level. And so, we try to put them in tracks and give them all the support and network to, to keep them there. So, it's by creating programming that roots them to the community. And we're constantly also doing that soft engagement of, hey, come to this event, come to this. It's not only that the professional development, but it's also strong networking supports that we do.
And Colin McNaut, Principal of Simran Memorial for the record. I think the other thing to keep in mind about the training that I was mentioning this summer is it's, it's, I think unparalleled in a lot of training programs, in that we are really pushing the core members into learning, the, the classroom environment, under the guides of a licensed teacher that's already in the room all the time, just kind of like student teaching. And there is a considerable amount of learning that takes place in that space to better. I felt incredibly prepared as a first-year teacher, relative to other first-year teachers that I knew who were not trained through the Teach for America program, right? And I also think that, that retention piece to that, like culture piece, there is a lot of, of connection that takes place amongst core members. And I think that really builds that, like, foundation, and, and that, those roots in Las Vegas. That, that teacher down the hall I referred to was also a core member from the year prior. And she's still here, she's a counselor at Veterans. And so, that retention has continued, right, because we fell in love with this community, and have wanted to really put down roots here, and are continuing to do that.
Thank you. Trustee Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Principal McNaut, I, I think I, I hear the beginnings of a, of a mini-series here, with you and your wife, how you guys found love, and found love for the community. I'm going to write it. Of course, I'll have to find someone to play you. I'm thinking, you know, Tom Cruise, probably. We'll just, you know, we'll make sure his face is stretched out a little bit more, and get him a set of glasses. But, in all, all kidding aside, I'm very familiar, of course, with, with you, with the energy that you brought in. Never seen an assistant principal literally round up kids from a, from a beach cruiser, right, which is what he did. Literally, you ever heard of herding cats? He actually did it, you know, and saw him effectively turn our, our, our school's party policy into one which, you know, people were pulling their hair out, to one that was actually effective. Congratulations for that one. The first time I'd ever seen him in, in my career. And just, again, for a first-year teacher, as anybody who's been a teacher, you've probably, you've probably got, went home in your first year in tears every once in a while. Or, I remember after I, I got my, I call myself the crusty councilman trustee, and believe me, after you've been teaching at, like, a place like Rantle High School for a couple of years, you're plenty crusty. And you have, of course, new teachers that come to you literally between classes, tears in the eye. And it, and it wasn't just the women either. It was, it was, believe me, the tears flow from, from a lot of people. So, I'm actually very, I, I think it's a, it's a fantastic way to support your, your teachers as they go into the, into the, into the setting. It's, it's very difficult. And typically, we lose about 40% of our teachers in any other settings between one and three years, you know. It just, it's, it's a tough job, and you need a lot of support. I do actually have a question here, too. I was going to ask the, but Trustee Stroffigan did kind of like beat me to the question. I was going to ask, what is the typical TFA person? For instance, are, are these people who are coming back, re-engaging into education after being in another profession? Are they veterans? Are they people who, they went to school to become a liberal arts major, and then they realize there's no money in that, and they decided that, hey, I better do something, that, that's what can actually pay off my loans? I guess that's the, the first question. The second question, I ask, how do we place the TFAs? Because, you know, we, we've got, the district has been so needy for teachers, we've gone all the way to Philippines to bring in teachers, right? So, how do we place the, the TFA teachers? And the third question would be, and, and this is like the financial one, what happens if, if we were, if we wanted to kind of like, you know, tap the brakes on this, you know, and, and see what's going to happen with the legislature? What would happen with, with this agreement i- if we, if, if we decided to tap the brakes just in, kind of like, because we don't, we don't know what's going to happen with the legislature? So, that's three questions. I hope someone wrote them down, because I've already forgotten them.
Can I start, because I'm probably the oldest, and I'm going to forget. But, can I take question three?
Please.
Just, okay, so if we pump the brakes, just to keep it real, TFA recruits the top of the top graduates from different colleges, correct? And if we, the longer we wait, that impacts recruitment. And so, we want the best of the best, because that's what our kids deserve. So, yes, we could wait and drag it out, but that would mean that we're going to lose access to possibly the best of the best. So, that's number three.
Thank you.
Thank you, Members of the Board. The makeup of our teachers, it was mentioned before, I restated, over 70% identify as people of color. About the same amount identifies as people from low-income communities. About 30 to 40% are Nevadans. So, we, that's one of the things that we've changed a lot in our recruitment model. We want to hire Nevadans. Most of our core, I would say, about 80 to 90% are people who are just graduating from their bachelor's degree, meaning very, very young. We do have 1% or 2%, depending on the year, of veterans, or people that also come from other, who have a second career, or young professionals who started a career, but they're coming back to, or going into, into the. Very few are people who started as educators. We do have a couple of them, but they're, they're not the ones that we, we think about when we think about our core.
And I'll answer question number two. How are they placed? I, Ms. Triana has said multiple times, I'm going to keep it real, I will do the same. I began this position September 10, September 30th of this year. So, I do not know in the past how they have been placed. I do know that I meet regularly with TFA, not just in talks with the MOA creation, but with our needs. So, March 28th is when internal transfer is paused. Mid-April is when surplus occurs. After that time is when we'll be able to identify our high-need schools, our schools in, you know, Region One specifically, that are not fully staffed, where we would then place these teachers.
Thank you.
Just, was there any reason why only in Region One?
No, I apologize. Looking at the number, the regions and the number of vacancies right now, that's, Region One still has the high number of vacancies. In addition, like Principal McNaut has stated, he is, is wanting a TFA in his school. So, we'll look at the vacancies, the high needs, what principals are welcoming, so the TFAs have that additional support on their campus.
I would love to have five to 10 teachers who want to go ahead and go on, on bicycles around our, our schools, and make sure the students are on time, and doing whatever they have to do. I'm just saying. I'll, I'll buy the bicycles.
Trustee Barron, once we get them to an administrative level, I think that's when they would begin that process. Initially, we focus on the four walls of the classroom, then they can get on the bikes.
I would begin siloing my own funds to purchase their bicycles.
Okay, I'll, that you put that on the record, so thank you. Trustee Cavazos?
Thank you, Madam President. Forgot about the unmuting here. Again, I wanted to reiterate that Principal McNaut had made the best case so far. You know, falling in love with the community is one thing, but falling in love with the teacher down the hall, and you're both still here, is pretty darn good. I very seldom change votes. I think in seven years, there's been maybe one or two times, and the very first time I did, it was a big one. And it had to do with Teach for America. We have a saying that everybody knows, you don't know what you don't know. And I didn't know. So, as a brand-new trustee, and it was before I was elected, I was appointed, I was the swing vote on rejecting Teach for America on an agenda. Boy, was I schooled after that vote. And this is somebody with 15 years experience. I thought I knew what I knew. And the people who schooled me were some very friendly principals from my district and throughout the district. And I received quite a few, some of them didn't sound so friendly invitations, so I went to all of them. And they invited me to their schools, and they invited me to their classrooms, and they said, we're going to take you to some classrooms. Some of the teachers are TFA core members, and some of the teachers are not. And you just go ahead and go visit them, and then you can ask whatever questions you want. And so, I did. And I saw some amazing teachers. And then they said, we want to tell you what programs and what classes we're going to have to eliminate if we do not have those TFA members. So, guess which trustee on the prevailing side brought that agenda item back, and then we voted for the TFA program. So, I thank you. I thank you for being here. You've made such an impact. But, I came in with 15 years of teaching experience, and so, I still didn't know what I didn't know. So, you guys have made quite an impact. I do want to say, though, that a lot of our veteran teachers in the district, district have been mentors to our TFA members, and they've been there, there with them all along, and have made quite a difference. So, to both TFA and to our veteran teachers, I thank you all.
Thank you. Trustee Stevens?
So, I just have one last question. It's Principal McNaut? All right. Okay. So, when I think about the process, and maybe Interim Superintendent Brenna Larson Mitchell can help me with this as well. But, when it comes to the process, when you're, so you're a principal, and you're looking for some slots that you really need to fill, and you have some educators that have been surplused. I know we have an HCM system. How do you, do, do you, as the principal, get to see qualified educators, or do you only get to see people who specifically apply at your school? And does that matter? Or, or can you look at it, are you looking at it and saying, no, I want a TFA? And so, then that surplus teacher gets put back on the list? Like, how does that, what does that look like?
Colin McNaut, Principal of Simran Memorial for the record. So, we in our system are able to see only the teachers that apply to our school. Not Teach for America, not surplus, right? Just anyone who is looking to transfer. They may have been notified of a surplus, but they haven't gone through the process yet. But, they just have attached their name because they're interested in coming to Simran Memorial, or whatever, whatever school they're interested in. We then go through the process, of course, interview, decide if those are candidates that we are interested, that fit the vision of the school, right? If those surplus teachers are not selected, then they go into the process of surplus, right, where they actually... Where they actually, based on seniority, are allowed to select open vacancies within the school, right? The principal does not, at least to my knowledge, have the authority to then say no to that placement, like, so the teacher who selects it, right? Once that process is complete, whatever jobs I still have advertising, that I have not found a candidate that fits the vision or a qualified candidate. I have a few that still have zero next to them, right? And then teacher, the HR and Teach for America connect and say, here's, here's all the core members we have. Here are all the positions we have. Let's figure out like where we're going to place these. And then I get an email from HR saying, here are the core members that you have placed with you. And then the process goes from there, right? So to my knowledge, as my understanding, no, teachers are not, no surplus teachers are, would not get a job as a result of Teach for America placement.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
It does.
Trustee Stevens, just one more thing, just because it was real. Oftentimes also, principals are told, sorry, we don't have any TFA candidates. I heard that a lot, too, as a principal. So I just want to put that out there. You put the ask out at the end and still not enough people. So just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Dr. Brenda Larson-Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, for the record, Brenda Larson-Mitchell. It's important to know, too, as schools have completed their school budget process and may have identified teachers, that there is still a voluntary process where those teachers can apply for open positions in the district before the surplus process.
Thank you for that clarity. Trustee Asparza Stroffigan.
Madam President, would you be open to a motion at this time?
Thank you. We still have one more, 2.02, so that we could approve the whole consent agenda or not. So can I hold you on your motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. Trustee Cavazos.
I'm going to defer to trustee Asparza Stroffigan. I was going to ask the same thing.
Thank you so much. So seeing no other questions, thank you to the team. We're going to ask for 2.02 interim superintendent, your team regarding algebra.
Madam President, members of the board, for the record, Brenda Larson-Mitchell, Dr. Mansel and team are making their way down.
So Dr. Mansel, if you could introduce your team and then I'll turn it over to trustee Biassadi to start the questions.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, interim superintendent Larson-Mitchell. For the record, Dustin Mansel, chief academic officer. I am here with our team from the Curriculum and Instruction Division, including Elena Kreiner-Wilson, our assistant superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. We have Jennifer Lyle, our director of the Mathematics Department, and Monica Martin, the director of Guidance and Counseling.
Trustee Biassadi, your questions.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So my biggest concern, looking into this strategic plan, was that it pushes advanced courses onto students that are not on an accelerated path. I took the time to discuss the issue with math teachers in the district. And according to reportcard.com, for 2022 to 2023, math proficiency for elementary students is at 33%. Math proficiency for middle school is at 23%. And for high school students, it's at 19%. I would like to see kids master the necessary prerequisites, prerequisite work before going into the following: algebra, geometry, algebra II, calculus, and so forth. As one teacher stated, powering through is not a learning strategy. So while I support setting high expectations, my question is, are we potentially, with this strategic plan, broadening the achievement gaps we have set out to close?
Thank you for that. I'm going to ask our interim superintendent to start and then see if we can take it from there.
Madam President, members of the board, for the record, Brenda Larson-Mitchell. We have worked extremely hard as a team for probably the last three to four years with our course enrollment guides, in which we use objective data for students' placement. So we look at their MAPG growth data. We also look at their criterion reference test data, which is the S-Back. If they have those scores that demonstrate that they are ready to go to, into advanced coursework, they go into advanced coursework. That's where they are performing. If students do not meet those test scores and they have good grades and they're demonstrating success in accelerated classes or even in a regular class, teachers can look at their grades. They can also look at their semester exam grades and look at different pieces of data to make sure that we're not missing any students. We want to make sure that students are in the classes that they need to be on based on what they are demonstrating in the class. So we've worked really, really hard to make sure that we're looking at objective data to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our students.
Thank you. Any other questions, trustee?
I would like to follow up that it is because of this data that I'm concerned about introducing these accelerated math classes into middle school. I think we should address and find a solution to meet students where they are right now. And one way to help students meet those expectations, I was looking into programs. I know that I submitted an item request in the past for Mathnesium, which has offered to a pilot program. It's an organization that has helped CCSD kids in the past for over 20 years. They work with other school districts, including Los Angeles Unified School District. And according to their data, since 2015, they have helped over 3,300 CCSE students boost their math fluency by an average of one year and three months in eight months. And in the top 25% of attendance, they saw an even greater result of students achieving over three years of improvement in only one year. So I would just say my recommendation is to, let's teach kids to walk before they can run. So I would be hesitant to introducing this strategic plan to middle school. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. I'm going to pause for just a second. We were just clarifying on our vote and how we should take it based on our legal counsel. And so based on the advice from our legal counsel, we will go ahead and we will approve the consent agenda without 2.10 and 2.02. We'll come back and take those separately. So trustee Asparza Stroffigan, I don't know if you want to continue with that motion to accept the rest of the consent agenda item and then we'll take those two other items separately that we just discussed.
So my question would be for counsel. Can we do the consent agenda vote and then do the next two right after?
John O'Kazaki, general counsel, for the record. You can do it in any order you want. So you can do the consent, full consent agenda, then the two that were polled. We do the two that were polled and then the full consent.
And right now, we're doing the full consent agenda and then the two items that we polled. So, oh, well, I'm going to, no, okay.
Yep, let's go.
Okay, trustee Asparza Stroffigan.
So I'd like to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda, removing items, classes, 2.01 and 2.02 at this time. Oh, 2.10 and 2.02.
Yep, thank you. So I have a motion to approve the consent agenda item without 2.10 and without 2.02. Do I have a second?
Counsel is in the queue. Oh. I misheard. I think the trustee said, adopt the consent agenda. You said adopt.
Ramona Asparza Stroffigan, I will approve my motion to approve the consent agenda item.
Thank you so much. Do I have a second?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm sorry you didn't recognize me yet.
Go ahead.
I will second the motion by trustee Asparza Stroffigan to approve the consent agenda minus 2.02 and 2.10. Did I get that right?
Correct. So I have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? Trustee Dominguez?
Yes, I have a point of information, Madam President. You made a comment saying that if we needed to bring, if we had an issue with the consent agenda, we need to bring it to you beforehand. And then, you know, instead of bringing it now. But however, we did remove things from this consent agenda. And I, I believe that we should have had that discussion with the board and not just unilaterally made that decision. So just putting it out there for the record that this, that there were things removed without discussion and there should have been.
I, I.
Regarding the electric buses. So that's, that's where I'm regarding, is that we, that was removed and it was, it should have been put up to the board for discussion. And it was not, we were not given that opportunity, so.
Okay. I think it's a training process for all of us, right? For 44 days? I think I hear what you're saying. And I will be mindful of that moving forward.
Thank you.
Okay, so then I have a first and a second to approve, to approve the consent agenda item. Please cast your votes. Okay, that motion passes seven to zero. I'll also entertain a motion, and counsel, do I have to take them separately? I do? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and accept a motion to approve the consent agenda item 2.10. Do I have a first? You did make the motion to pull it, but now we need to approve it so we could move it forward.
You can make a motion. That's different than you did last time. It's a learning.
We're in learning, so trustee Stevens. Trustee Stevens, do you want to make the motion to?
Sure. Sure. I'll make a motion to approve 2.10. I would like to make a quick comment and just say that one of the reasons I wanted to pull that portion from the consent agenda was to have public discussion. And I was thrilled by the team and all the information they provided us and provided the community. It was wonderful to, to discuss. So thank you to the team for giving us that helpful information. Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a first? I have a second from trustee Cavazos?
Yes, I would like to approve trustee Stevens' motion to approve item 2.10.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Go ahead and cast your vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Now I'll go to item 2.02. I will entertain a motion to go ahead and move that forward as well. Trustee, the screen doesn't say anything yet, so I'm going to, I think I'm looking at trustee Biassadi, right?
I would like to make a motion to pull the item from the agenda, from the consent agenda at this time.
Okay. So the motion is to remove the approval of that item, 2.02. And was that just, that would be an action item to accept the report, right? Interim superintendent?
Madam President, members of the board, correct. We are required to submit these reports and, and receive action from the board in acceptance.
So trustee Biassadi, it would be to not accept the report from the team. Is that what your motion is? Not to accept the report?
Thank you, Madam President. My question is, by voting this down, would I be removing the strategic plan or just not approving the report?
Just not approving the acceptance of the report.
I understand. So I will, would like to make a motion to approve the, the report.
Thank you. So I have a first from trustee Biassadi to approve the report. Do I have a second? Trustee Cavazos?
Yes, I will go ahead and approve that motion.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. Will you please cast your vote? Okay, that motion passes seven to zero. And then just for the public, we're, this is 44 days for us being a team. There's a lot of things that happened last year. And one of those is creating the template for the presentations of the report from the staff. We are going to be going through governance training throughout this year. We start next Tuesday by looking at governance for ourselves, to hold ourselves accountable. But in the, we will also be able to look at the template of what we want to track as far as student outcomes and many other things. And so it is a process. And I'm just really proud of the team for the 44 days of being able to be professional, attentive, digging in. And so it is a process. I just want to communicate that. So moving on from item 2.0, then, I'm going to have trustee Henry, if you would please read the warrants.
Thank you, Madam President. Ratified warrants as listed in the Bill's Payable Transmittal and Board Memorandum Number 12-24-25 in the total amount of $150,961,108.70.
Thank you so much. We're going to go ahead and go to item 3.02. Before I open it up, is there anyone that hasn't completed a public comment card? All right, then I'm going to ask interim superintendent Larson-Mitchell if you want to go call up your team for the presentation.
Madam President, members of the board, Brenda Larson-Mitchell for the record. So we have Mr. McPartlin and Ms. Jones joining us on an update on chronic absenteeism, where again, you will see our data is headed in the right direction due to the hard work of our administrators, licensed professionals, support professionals, our family, our community, all working together. So thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, interim superintendent Larson-Mitchell. I'm Kevin McPartlin, the associate superintendent. For the record, I am joined this evening by Ms. Danielle Jones, the director of chronic absenteeism and shared housing. This is the regular Focus 2024 Strategic Plan on Chronic Absenteeism report, which will cover our efforts and results through the first semester of this school year. As this is the first time we're presenting to you as the new board, I'd like to start by sharing that chronic absenteeism is the state's measure of student engagement at this time. A student is considered chronically absent when they are absent for more than 10% of enrolled days. This metric does include excused and unexcused absences. These chronic absenteeism presentations contribute to the vision of the board, of the school trustees, under the student success priority and within the area of safety and engagement. As part of the Focus 2024 Strategic Plan, we've presented chronic absenteeism updates multiple times, starting in 2019, with the last presentation occurring this past August during a combined presentation with student discipline. As you will see, we are continuing to see positive outcomes related to chronic absenteeism. And we are maintaining our theory of action, which is that if we work with multiple agencies and district departments, and if we provide high-quality Tier One instruction and MTSS supports with effective monitoring tools, then chronic absenteeism will decrease. Our strategies to combat chronic absenteeism are aligned with our theory of action and include our comprehensive data dashboard, which is used by schools and central offices to guide our efforts to support students and families. We also continue to increase and refine our partnerships, both internally and externally with the community, to wrap our students and families with the supports they need to remove the obstacles to positive attendance. Madam President, with your permission, I'll turn it over to Ms. Jones for the review of the data.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, interim superintendent Brenda, Ms. Brenda Larson-Mitchell, Danielle Jones for the record. At first line, at this, end of the first semester this year, the chronic absenteeism rate was 26.6% compared to last year at this time, when the rate was 29.6%. At the end of last year, absenteeism rate was 30.9%, demonstrating the effectiveness of our recent initiatives and interventions. Although the Focus 2024 Strategic Plan has expired, we still listed the targets from that plan as they are included in the current template for board presentations. However, we no longer shade the cells to indicate our progress towards the goals. We are pleased to report the levels of chronic absenteeism shown here demonstrated decrease for every student group compared to the first semester last year. To highlight some improvements, the data indicated a reduction of 9.1% for American Indian, Alaskan native student group, 3.8% reduction for English language. for English language learners, three point seven percent for students eligible for special education, three point seven percent for African-American student group, and three point four percent for Hispanic student group. The gap between our highest and lowest student groups in terms of chronic absenteeism is at twenty point six percentage points, which is an improvement from last year when we were at twenty-four point four percent. This remains a key focus as we move forward. While we don't have first semester data for other districts, we did look at the end-of-the-year rates and our chronic absenteeism rates are lower than Los Angeles Unified, Denver Public Schools. We are nearly the same as Albuquerque, but higher than Washoe County and San Diego Unified. Next, I'd like to discuss the challenges. One of the major challenges we face is addressing root causes of chronic absenteeism, such as basic needs, physical and mental health, and a sense of belonging, which requires a multifaceted approach to address. We also need to continue to increase student engagement and develop proactive actions by collaborating with multiple departments to address the barriers. While we've made efforts, we're continuing to engage parents and guardians who may not fully understand the long-term impact of absenteeism that they have on academic performance and future opportunities for their children. Successes, our off, our district attendance enforcement officers have been instrumental in our progress. Over the first semester, we've completed twenty thousand home visits. This semester, we're sending officers even after hours and on weekends to connect with families, to ensure positive interactions, our officers arrive in a plain CCSD vehicle and identify themselves as CCSD staff at the door. Our office is working with schools, other divisions, community partners, and municipalities to increase attendance recognition programs to address absenteeism at all angles. A unique success has been our collaboration with local businesses. Many of these businesses have joined our efforts to address truancy. Our enforcement officers support schools by responding to calls from businesses and transporting student, truant students back to school. Finally, lessons learned. One of the most important lessons we've learned is that to address chronic absenteeism, we must focus on basic needs, like creating a strong sense of belonging, ensuring physical and mental health, and addressing childcare or safety concerns. When students feel supported, their attendance improves. Additionally, we found that collaboration with schools to gather best practices to share have been effective to support schools with higher chronic absenteeism rates. So for next steps, we're continuing to conduct data reviews of chronic absenteeism rates to identify schools in the greatest need of support, to provide targeted interventions to those schools. As part of the Everyday Matters campaign and renewing engagement with local businesses by distributing the Everyday Matter window decals to display and to promote the campaign, as well as recognize the businesses that support CCSD initiatives. I provided you with a sample of these decals and businesses that want to partner can go to the Everyday Matters website at everyday.ccsd.net. Finally, we'll continue to hold student town halls to hear directly from students about their attendance experiences and allow us to tailor our strategies based on their feedback. We also participate in the superintendent student advisory council to hear student concerns and address any misconceptions around chronic absenteeism. Ultimately, we're focusing on a proactive approach to help enhance communication to avoid the spring attendance decline. Thank you. This concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Trustee, we'll start with trustee Johnson.
I really appreciate the, you all coming back. Thanks, Ms. McPartlin and Ms. Jones for coming back again. I know you have to do it, but you do it with such enthusiasm and I appreciate it. And first thing I wanted to say, I really appreciate how in the lessons learned, you know, we talked last time that you were here about having conversations with schools that are doing it well. And so you, you obviously are taking that to heart, so I, using those lessons to continue to move forward. The second thing I wanted to inquire about is, what is the way that we are using really engaging coursework to be able to keep kids coming back? So like, I know we're using, we're thinking about like the external factors and that, you know, that helps, that keeps, but like, when school is relevant to all students, have we found that as we look at schools that have higher rates of achievement inside of their school buildings, they have less absenteeism? And then trying to make the connection between what, what is happening inside of those classrooms and why students are showing up there versus schools that may have lower levels of achievement? And again, I know some of the external factors might, might play into why school, students have lower levels of achievement as well, so.
Trustee Johnson, thank you for the question. Absolutely. We do see a great correlation between engagement in the classroom, engagement in the school, sense of belonging to the school with chronic absenteeism, certainly. I'll turn it over to Ms. Jones, just to kind of talk a little bit about some of the correlation and what she's seeing.
Thank you, trustee Johnson. We do look at the classroom engagement factor as well. I know we work closely with the MTSS, our multi-tiered system support, and tiered one, high-quality instruction in the classroom, because we do want the students to want to go to class, to learn. So we do see that correlation. So we do work with all the departments to try to provide that training to the schools.
Thank you. Trustee Satori?
Thank you. Thank you for that report. And if I remember correctly, from last school year, I believe it was over thirty thousand home visits for the year, so we're on pace to, to top that. So excellent. That's fantastic. I know it's a lot of hard work. I had a couple of questions just for further, I guess, further information or follow-up. The student town halls, from what I remember, it was that schools could request to host, or you identified schools that were the highest need. Can you just kind of elaborate on how those are going? Have they expanded into any new schools? Just kind of a little more on that topic.
Absolutely. Thank you, trustee Satori, for the question. So, the student town halls, which we do in cooperation with the Equity and Diversity Education Department. So we do have principals that have requested, we have principals that have requested a second one. You know, our goal is to build capacity so they can hold their own. But also with, as we have targeted schools, when we talk about the student discipline presentations that we've done, we have some schools that have identified there, as well as Ms. Jones and her staff have identified schools. Because the whole point of the town halls is really to, to dig into that relationship between the adults and the students and really flush that out. And so while it affects dissonance, certainly it's a part of that whole sense of belonging and engagement in the school. So, so we do select schools, we have expanded it, and it continues to go well, and it's really trying to flush that piece out with that engagement.
So is it typically then a one-time town hall unless they request to come back, or is it ongoing engagement?
In general, it is a, a one-time town hall with some support for the administration and staff at the school to kind of run their own.
Carry it forward.
And there are times where they've done it and they say, you know, can we have you come back? So, so it's both. But in general, it is the idea of building capacity so we can get to all the schools.
Okay. Thanks. My second question was, in the next steps, it had stated enhancing communication to reduce that spring decline we see when we see those numbers go up. Can you elaborate a little bit on that, on what the communication looks like? Like, what are we going to do to try to reduce that spring decline?
Thank you, trustee Satori. We are working with our communications unit to try to develop a comprehensive or consistent messaging schools can put out, templates, things the principals can use. We also want to ensure officers, when they go out, they talk to those families and try to, since it's early in the semester, talk to those families early on before it gets to a habit.
Thank you, trustee Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you. It is, it's very interesting, because I, I had a write-along with our CCSD PD with Officer Vaz. So it's interesting to see on the ground level what's happening. And so I wanted to ask you about the rate of absenteeism that we have. So, I, I know during our briefing, you mentioned we're currently around, I think it was nine percent that you mentioned to me. Was that correct? Trustee Dominguez, do you mean the positive attendance rate? Yes. Yeah, we have about eighty-nine percent, ninety percent. Sorry, what, for the absenteeism rate? We're twenty-six percent was, twenty-six point six percent. Okay. And is that, is that, that, is that an average? Or what is like, what is the worst school percentage?
Well, it does range. I mean, we have our lowest, we have around ten percent. We have some schools about forty-one percent, forty-nine percent, depending on, on the areas and what school it is.
Got it. And have you seen a change since, since January and February regarding a lot of, just, I'm just going to be really frank, the media fear that's happening with the immigration policies that are coming out?
Thank you, trustee Dominguez, for that question. So, one of the things that we've been tracking, obviously, since then, is, is we do always, is just with, with student attendance and some root causes and some, what are the reasons behind it? And so, as far as overall chronic absenteeism, since, you know, over the last month, we've not seen a dramatic change based on what we saw in the previous years. There was a one-day dip based on kind of a national campaign. We did see a dip for one day, but it returned back to the levels we have. We have been working with our attendance officers when they're going to the homes. You know, they are, they are badged for their protection, but we want to make sure that they are in cars that are, they're not in police cars going out. As we talk about enforcement, they really are leading with, you know, we are from the district, we're here to help, we want to get your students schools. We're changing some of the messaging just to make sure that we're, you know, approaching families in a way that they can, can be reached and be supportive with. So we've made some adjustments, but we haven't noticed a change.
Have we looked at the schools specifically in the high Latino areas that are, that have a lot, a very high number of Latinos, instead of just going and encompassing the whole district as a whole and averaging? Have we targeted those schools to see if their absenteeism rate is going up beyond the one-day protest, I believe?
Absolutely. And please feel free to jump in. So, part of the, the charge that, that Ms. Jones has is she goes through the data of every school every two days, right? And so, so absolutely, we, we track, we look for trends, we look for trends in, in region, in municipality, in student population. So absolutely. And again, it's still kind of in alignment with where we were in previous years, but it is absolutely something we track.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Well, so I just, I'll be frank, so when I was on, on the write-along, we visited several schools, one of which was Cheyenne High School. And, you know, the, we spoke to an administrator and she had mentioned that her absentee, she had seen a huge increase in her absenteeism rate. And it went from, she had rated about like, they usually stay around ten percent, and they had gone up to over twenty-five percent. So she saw a big jump in her school. And so I just was wanting to make sure that we're not just averaging out the whole district, but kind of targeting and making sure that we're talking to our Latino families about that. The other thing I wondered if you guys had looked into was, and I, I want to recognize that this might not be completely in your purview, but school lunches are so important for kids. And I know, you know, I've seen a lot of stuff going on in the media right now of school lunches. Are we looking at that as something that we can maybe make better so we can help our kids come to school and want to come to eat?
Thank you, trustee Dominguez. We did see your post, and actually that led to conversations. And so, just to begin-
It was as an individual.
As an individual, as an individual. But, but yes, so it did lead to a conversation of just, it's all part of engagement, wanting to be in school, so it's part of our conversations.
Okay. Great. Is that, is that conversation looking at how we can, you know, I know there was some talks, and I've heard this from my own son, mention that there used to be food trucks available, and now because of federal policies dictating that we can't have those food trucks because they're not part of the, I guess, the pyramid, they might have some kind of dessert or something, they increase. I can, is there talks within, going in from the USDA to the Food National Nutritious Lunch, like, are we looking at all these programs and going, hey, are we, is there a movement going forward to make these? Is, is there something we can add? Because kids are coming home hungry. My son's coming home hungry. And so I, I want to know, what can we add to this?
For sure. So again, it was a-
And trust, interim superintendent?
Madam President, members of the board, for the record, Brenda Larson Mitchell, Mike Casey and Mr. Wines are here from the Food Services Department. If you'd like to, they can expand on that.
Oh, great. We got backup. Nice. Thank you. I think what you guys do is so amazing. You guys are doing, having so many school lunches a day. It's, I'm not here to harp on you guys, but I do get the complaints directly from my son. So he does have my ear. And, and I, I did have a constituent posting online about a seemingly cheese bowl, looked like a cheese bowl with something else in there, I'm not sure. But I took a look at the menu and it seemed like everything was cheese on the menu. I'm quite concerned. And I think if we, I think one of the things that would be great for kids to have so they're not absent so much is if they're not hungry at school.
Thank you for that, Mike Casey, for the record. In the instance that you spoke, spoke of, I mean, certainly that was a service training opportunity, which staff immediately addressed and did contact the parent to hear those concerns. And certainly, we are providing additional training. So we are not, you know, we're not blind to that fact, we are aware of that issue, and we're certainly addressing in the immediate. But as mentioned with us, as our director of food service can speak a bit more about, if you'd like, that instance and the requirements in terms of nutritional requirements, which, you know, they are federally required, so it's what we adhere to in order to receive our reimbursement. We are held to a strict standard and an anti-compete. So in terms of what's required of us, in order to receive our reimbursement, that actually funds the operation. So to be noncompliant to that would pull that funding away, and we would no longer be able to provide our students meals free of charge. But Mr. Wines, if you want to speak additional on that?
And, Mr. Wines, I just, I would, we would appreciate your statement. I know that our topic is on chronic absenteeism, but it's, I want to be able to hear you, we want to hear you, and then we'll revert back to chronic absenteeism.
Sure. Thank you. David Wines, for the record, Director of Food Service. I'm here to answer any questions. I just know that we're committed to following the requirements of the USDA. It's mandated through USDA and also governed by the NDA. All of our menus are compliant throughout the, across the board, breakfast, lunch, supper, and snacks. We take feedback seriously, and anyone who can submit some feedback, work with us, we meet with everyone that has some information to provide. Everything is compliant. It's not as necessarily as fun and exciting as Chick-fil-A or anything like that. However, we do have to meet those minimum requirements so we can continue on getting the full reimbursement and continue under this community eligibility provision, allowing the entire district to continue to eat for free. So.
Thank you. And this might be an extended conversation for another time, but, you know, even if we went into like a food, getting a, a distribution service with an extra third-party supplier that maintain that, you know, USDA regulations, could we add in hard-boiled eggs to that? Would that be against the regulations? I mean, these, I just, small ideas, I guess, that we have, but I'm, I know I'm concerned about it, and I know a lot of families across my district and the entire Clark County are concerned about our food that our kids are getting. And this might actually help absenteeism to, for kids to know that they will be getting a nice meal when they get to school.
We're always here, open for feedback and conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Trustee Esparsa Stroff again?
So, you know I like numbers. And I love the chart that shows the difference between two thousand and twenty-one to now. And if we did kind of just some basic math, it's like almost a thirteen percent reduction. I don't, I just want that to be like publicly stated, because people that might be listening don't have access to seeing the charts. And that is huge for a district of this size. So I just want to really acknowledge the hard, hard work, the lens that has been focused on this effort by your department, by the comms, but also, I was at a opportunity for a forum I was asked to moderate for the city of Henderson, and the topic was chronic absenteeism. And they had all levels there, and it was important because of the fact that they see that it's them, the boots on the ground, that are doing everything possible. Our teachers are being asked to do much more than ever before than just teach. So, I want to bring to your attention and also ask you some questions. I'll try to wrap it. There was a report that was based on research called the Opportunity Makers. And there were three things that really emphasized why kids are, and school districts are excelling. One is coherence, which thank you to our interim superintendent with unified instruction. Another thing was consistency, which was just plain good teaching. But the other thing, which you mentioned, which I think we need to hit very hard, and it goes back to belonging. And that emotional connection that, that adults make in the building every day, from our custodial staff to our attendance workers, to everyone that services kids. So I want to highlight that, that I like that term of opportunity makers, because we are giving our kids that opportunity to succeed. So here are my questions. Curious about going forward, the original targets, going back to the data that were established. We are going to be having an opportunity, as President Bustamante Adams said, to redo our templates for the data reports. My curiosity is, how do we look at where we are, and then how, what kind of advice from your lens for the new targets? That's my first question. I have three.
Thank you for your questions, as always. So I think the main thing that we have, would like to be able to present, that I know that we've talked a lot about, is because of the change in the board, when we start looking at by municipality and by student groups and by school clusters and all things- and by school clusters and all things. So that'd be something that, that we would like to share in a public forum like this. Um, but, but again, we would follow your lead and, and, but, but that's the one piece that we would like.
It's like I, you read my mind. So thank you for that. I just wanted to be back and noted because that is something that municipalities are asking for. The second one is not, um, I don't know, it's a broad question. Um, I'm worried about, um, the cuts to schools. There are many schools that purchase attendance officers out of their own school budgets. So you may not have that information, but that is something that I want to know, what are we going to do to try to support that gap? Now we've made such huge gains as we do with this, uh, additional support. So what is, what is the plan for trying to support schools that maybe we'll have to look at those unfortunate, uh, decisions?
Thank you, trustee Esparsa Stroff again. So we do have our district level attendance officers. We have 30 officers, um, about, over half of them are 12-month employees. We have, uh, the other half about nine-month employees. So the schools that currently have their own attendance officers, if they happen to have to surplus or move them, our, our officers will take up that load. So we will start doing their home visits for them, checking on their kids. So we'll definitely fill in those gaps.
Thank you. I was only going to add that also, one of the things that we've really been proud of since we came out of COVID is really where chronic absenteeism is a community issue and we need support in the community. So we've built great partnerships, great relationships with community partners and municipalities. And so we will be kind of also relying on some of the supports that have been built to kind of carry some of the load as well with, with some of those schools.
Again, you read my mind. But I do want to go back to if there are, um, attendance officers that are going to be surplus, I would hope that we would have other spaces and places in the district that we would not lose that talent. So I know that's just part of the surplus process. And then to the community pieces, I think, um, I want to say that opening that conversation about making sure the gaps that are there and also expanding the messaging to the municipalities of how they can support even more because I know that many of them are interested in being that partner with us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Trustee Henry?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I had questions, um, regarding how are the students? There are many students who, um, there are many students that have mental health, um, instabilities and also with, um, housing instabilities as well. What supports are being offered to those families? I often hear from families who are unhoused, um, but they still manage to get their children to school. But then there are some days where they can't and they're told, you need to have a note from a doctor. And there's no note for houselessness. So what supports are being offered, um, by us to those families?
Thank you, trustee Henry. So our officers, when they go out into the community, we do equip them with, uh, community resources. If it's a health organization, we do lean on Hazel Health, which is provided to our CCSD students. It's free of charge for them. Uh, we've also given that to the schools the information. So if there is a student in need, uh, they can refer them to these programs. Uh, we work closely with our Title I office. So if we have a situation where a family is in need, again, we will reach out to our partners. But we do equip our officers with all of our different resources, whether it's from municipalities or through our other, uh, nonprofit organizations, community partnerships. So we do, are available to them.
And interim superintendent, did you want to add something?
Thank you. Uh, Madam President, members of the board, for the record, Brenda Larson Mitchell. Um, trustee Henry, we also have purchased Hazel Health and CareSalus, um, to help, um, our students and our families. And we are purchasing that again for the upcoming school year, um, to support our schools with the mental health supports.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Um, I also wanted to follow up since you mentioned those two. In the event that, you know, a student is having a mental health crisis or challenge, um, and I know that some days that those, those services are not readily available. Um, how, how do you all support families then? Because if they can't provide a note, I'm sorry, and that's what I'm saying. If they can't provide a note and maybe they can get in three days later, they're writing a note for that date that they're being seen, but those days prior are unexcused.
Madam President, members of the board, for the record, Brenda Larson Mitchell. Um, the Hazel Health is a telehealth, so that is convenient for our families. Um, we also have our counselors and our social workers, um, at schools who are very well-trained to help our students as needed. Um, so if, you know, there, there are instances when they need assistance immediately, um, we're available. We also have, um, Go Guardian, which if a student is online and they're looking at things that, you know, may, um, provide an indication that there are suicidal ideations. Um, we do wellness checks on our students on the weekends, in the evenings, um, working with metro and school police. So we try to do everything we can to be readily available for them. Um, I'll also just do a, a shout out to our Superintendent Student Council Advisory. Our students last May, when they presented to the board, they did focus on mental health supports. And so now on the back of, uh, student IDs, they have those resources readily available for them at any time when they may need them.
Thank you for that. And just one more. Um, and what guidance or trainings? Cause I know that you all spoke to the attendance officers that go out, but what, um, guidance or trainings are given to the staff members who are at the schools and working directly with students? Um, I've heard from some families that, um, they've been told, well, you need to get here and you need to just push through it. Um, so what, what guidance and trainings, um, are we offering for our staff members to be more supportive of those families, uh, families and students who are facing these various crises?
Thank you, trustee Henry, for the question. I'm gonna actually speak to one other thing you brought up a couple, is the note situation and parents being able to provide notes. And so, um, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Jones to speak about the training she offers as well as the Go to Grow Network. So as far as with the notes, one of the things that's been, um, an incredibly positive thing that we've seen is the amount of communication between parents, families, and the schools. So again, as we talk about like not all parent notes, you know, excuse chronic absenteeism. It still counts against chronic absenteeism, but the school is communicating with the families, the families are communicating, we're able to keep kids up with the academics and instruction. So, so that has been, um, has been a really a positive. As far as those days you mentioned, there still is for unexcused absence where schools can do an appeal process where they can, you know, work with the families that way. So, um, so I just wanted to address the notes and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Jones with the training.
Thank you. Trustee Henry, our office does participate in the onboarding process for any new attendance clerks. So my coordinator will jump on and give them, um, information on how to process the notes and how to talk to families. When I do my one-on-one training with schools, I always invite the administrator and their clerks and we talk about best practices, communications. I even offer them a script on how to call home and make it a welcoming phone call. So we work through those, um, depending on the needs of the school. We really cater to what, uh, will help their student population. We also work with our Go to Grow Coalition, which is, um, a group, except we're meeting next week with different entities, including the Public Education Foundation, RTC, um, Public Housing Authority. Uh, we also talk to Title I in that group. So it's a bunch of, um, different organizations. We work together to put all, all of our knowledge and our resources to figure out how we can deploy those to our students in a timely manner. So we do work with our communities and I believe the training is also helping.
Thank you both so much.
Thank you, trustee Cabasos.
Thank you, uh, Madam President. I'll just make this really short so we can kind of wrap up this item. Um, this is a student question. Uh, I don't want to say, uh, they don't want me to say the name of their high school, but they were one of the very happy participants in one of the town halls. And they thought that they really got a lot out of it and the participation. They didn't tell me the percentage. I forgot to ask. They just said it was high participation. They want to know if there's any way, uh, it's kind of a follow-up on trustee Satori and on, um, I think trustee Dominguez on getting more information out to the board. Is there any way after you have these town halls, without giving away confidential information, that we could receive like some kind of, let me see what he said. Um, is there any way that the board can receive like a report of what our most urgent topics are, the solutions, uh, that are proposed by students and that we can get a general idea of how the meeting went without giving away any information, confidential information?
Madam President, members of the board, for the record, Brenda Larson Mitchell. Um, we're happy to provide a summary of those things and, and many times our students have the best solutions. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, they're listening right now and I think you just made them very happy with that reply. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Trustee Biassadi?
Good evening. Um, I wanted to go back on, uh, you had mentioned that you can sometimes see when there's, you can always see when there's a dip on a particular day. Do you see a dip on Mondays after the weekend?
Thank you for the question, trustee Biassadi. Uh, we look at the whole entire calendar from last year to this year and we do see hotspots on Fridays, you know, after Halloween, like we do see those dips. So we are looking at that closely and, and trying to give best practice to the schools. Like, let's have a dress-up day. Let's do something fun on those days because they can forecast those dips and try to be proactive. So that's what I'm working on for that spring dip as well as trying to develop some plans to focus on those days.
Cause I was thinking, uh, um, just thinking outside of the box, maybe a, a text going out Sunday evening and reminding parents of the importance that, because it's, it has been my case where it's harder to pull my kids out of bed on Monday mornings. Um, I also wanted to, uh, talk about the, the start time. If you think maybe that's, uh, something that is affecting absenteeism across our district, just at the start times, because that's also a lot of feedback that I've gotten from parents is that it's hard to get kids to school at that hour.
I'll take the question. Trustee Biassadi, when we look at like our tardies, we do see, uh, tardies in the first period in the morning. Um, secondary, if they're absent more than 30 minutes, I mean, they're tardy more than 30 minutes, they're going to be considered absent. So we do see those trends as well. So I know schools are trying to be proactive in incentives and their tardy policies to, um, kind of target those issues.
And lastly, I wanted to mention that, um, my kids don't go hungry. I think, I'm obviously in a different district, but it is a, a school-by-school type of case where there are food trucks in our school, in my kid's school. There are vending machines. I would like to see healthier food in the vending machines. That's something that we can revisit in the future, but, uh, that's not one of the issues my kids face. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Trustee Zamora?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, team, for the presentation. I have three questions. Um, as trustee Dominguez mentioned, right, the day of action that we know, we saw a huge dip on that. Um, it is pretty public out there that it seems like there might be more coming on. Can we do any, I want to be proactive, right? How do we reach out to these principals who might have, you know, Cheyenne or any other schools that have big dips right now because of the climate we're in, sending them probably resources? So before, you know, we're sending out that information of the safety, the resolution, whatever we need to send out to let staff know that they can communicate with their families.
Thank you, trustee Zamora. So, so absolutely right. Um, you know, just as we were looking at, you know, we follow social media, we're looking at things. And now that we, we kind of observed what happened on that first, first day. So it's certainly something that was, we become aware, we will put messaging out to our attendance officers, we'll put messaging out to the attendance clerks and to the schools so that we can be a little more proactive about it now that we've seen it. Yes.
Thank you. And then I had a question about the IDs because I know that, um, our committee had worked on getting the resources. So I've heard two different things, that the resources is strictly for Safe Voices. It just has the number or it has a QR code that has the information for CareSalus and Hazel Health.
Thank you, trustees Zamora. So it's actually both. So for years, we've had, where it had the Safe Voice and the Suicide Hotline and the QR code is a sticker that was added this year based on, um, feedback from the Student Advisory Committee. So it's both.
Perfect. Thank you. And speaking of QR codes, I cannot do the QR code on this because it's, you know, inverted. But in the website, if someone was to scan that QR code, what is on the website right now?
Thank you, trustee Zamora. So, uh, this past semester, we updated the website to be more CCSD-focused with frequently asked questions about attendance. It's more family-focused so parents can go on there. Uh, we have links to our community partners, uh, links to resources from municipalities. Uh, we also have a contact page which emails me directly and my coordinator. So if we've gotten in from, questions from families, um, community members, so we're able to give them a quick reply with that.
Follow-up to that, um, do you all have on there the importance of making sure that families also have their information up to date? Because I know previously, one of the biggest issues when students, you know, have been absent and the school's trying to reach out, the phone number's not working, their emails are not working, there's no communication to reach the parent, right? Is there a way we can put that, you know, huge in letters? Like make sure your stuff is updated or even a link to, um, and I'm blanking on the campus, Infinite Campus, right, to update that information? Cause I think that's a key too that we've been seeing.
Thank you. Yes, I will add that to our website, but we do have also linked to Public Education Foundation, which has some great videos for families too on that, those types of process, but we'll add our own.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sue, Noah, there's in the queue. I'm gonna, um, have public comment. So Dr. Bemel, if you'd like to come up and then, I know I'm gonna chop this up, but Ms. Shaquilla, are you still in the audience? Okay. If you'd like to come up to this, um, microphone. Dr. Bemel?
Good evening. Tiffany Bemel, for the record. I need to amend my 2.01. It was trustee Stevens. I don't know what I wrote in my notes, but that's what it was. So a couple things. I had students with friends who only came for lunch. So that's something to think about. They didn't come to class, but they came for lunch period. So trustee Dominguez is right there. Um, our school has a 90-plus percent approval rating. Mr. McNott is fantastic, as you all saw and heard. He's wonderful. And he actually does site-based student surveys. And that's how I know that because he shares his data with us and it's 100% transparent, literally showing us the raw data as it's collected on Google forms. So there's nothing to hide and we know that. Our attendance officer, Mr. Washington, has a fantastic relationship with our students and they come to school and he knows them all by name. When I don't see a student for three days in a row, I report to him and I report to our attendance clerk and they go looking for the kid. When the phone numbers don't work in Infinite Campus, I report that in Infinite Campus. And guess what? My attendance officer goes and finds out why the phone number doesn't work. There are processes in place that help to go find the kids. With regard to attendance notes, they're great, but with chronic absenteeism, as I've asked 4,000 times and you have so very politely explained at the beginning of this, um, speech tonight, it doesn't matter if it's an, it's an excused or an unexcused absence. 20 is 20 and that's it. That's all they get. So chronic absenteeism is different than just being absent. And I think that's something that we have to kind of get over in our heads. We have to kind of push over that barrier in our heads when we're looking at chronic absenteeism as defined by the state of Nevada. It's not Clark County School District. It's something that is like this weird data point from the state and they want to know like why our kids aren't here that many days. I also want to know, cause I have kids who've missed like 30 days already this quarter, but that's beside the point. So, good job on the, this one. Good job on the explanation. I love my attendance officer. Please don't let us lose him because I will rail. I just actually texted Colin, that, Mr. McNott, that if we lose our attendance officer, I will rally and it won't be pretty. Um, budget cuts should not affect students. We say that all the time. That type of budget cut would affect students and you guys need to do better than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Good evening, board. Good evening, interim, interim superintendent Shaquilla Eilid, for the record. According to the Focus 2024 Strategic Plan and the Vision of the Board of School Trustees, student success outlines the following: achievement in core content areas, achievement gaps, access and equity, and safety and engagement. The other areas of focus are teachers, principals, and staff, balanced governance and leadership, sound fiscal management, and parent and community support. All of these parts are inextricable from one another and each part is integral to the, to the larger whole of an educated, informed, engaged, and thriving community. Every community has its, its own challenges and I am here to ask all of you, how will you take actionable steps to closing the achievement gaps and increasing the access and equity for Black, African-American, or melanated students? As you have presented to us at the first school board meeting of this calendar year, the data shows that Black students have the second lowest graduation rate in the, in the whole district as. second lowest graduation rate in the whole district at 71.8%, just higher than students eligible for special education at 68.7%. Meanwhile, English language learners and all other groups are graduating at higher rates. Going back to your data, for this academic year of 2024 to 2025, at the Clark County Detention Center, we make up 50% of students enrolled. At the juvenile detention center, grade six to 12, we are 50.48% of students enrolled. And at Spring Mountain Youth Camp, we make up 58.2% of students enrolled. Yet in all of CCSD, we make up only 15.9% of student population. What's being expressed to you right now is that my community is underrepresented when it comes to achievement and overrepresented when it comes to placement in these centers that are supposedly addressing problematic behavior and criminality. In a city, a state, and a country that owes its progress, promise, and perpetual advocacy of human and civil rights to the Black people who have continuously fought for everyone, it is abominable that so many here have allowed and aided in these gross disparities. What will you all do to alleviate these ills for the melanated community? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Hearing public comments, then I will entertain a motion to go ahead and approve 3.02 to accept the report. I have Trustee Beasadi?
Yes, Beasadi.
Beasadi. I was thinking about somebody else. I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the item on the agenda.
Yep. It would be item 3.01.
3.01.
Thank you. And so, then it would be, Trustee Cavassos?
Thank you, Madam President, and I will second the motion to approve 3.01 Focus 2024 Strategic Plan Update: Chronic Absenteeism.
Thank you. Please cast your votes. That passes seven to zero. We're going to go ahead and move on to 4.01, our legislative update. This is not an action item.
Madam President, members of the board, interim superintendent Brenda Larson Mitchell, Todd Story, chief communication officer, for the record. I'm here with Dr. Keating, who made it out of Carson City just in the nick of time to join us in person tonight. So, we're here to give you our first weekly update on what's happening at the legislature.
Thank you, Mr. Story. Madam President, members of the board, superintendent for the record, my name's Brad Keating, Assistant Superintendent of Community Partnerships and Government Relations. Today is the 11th day of the 120-day legislative session, which means we're approximately 10% of the way through. Today, as Mr. Story mentioned, has turned into a snow day at the legislature. Lots of snow fell overnight and is expected to continue through tomorrow. So, this has forced the cancellation of many committees and floor sessions, and everybody waving to each other as we drove to the airport early this morning. So, currently, there are 506 bills that have been introduced at the legislative session. CCSD is tracking 92 of those 506 bills. With only a few days into session, there have been, there are a few important deadlines to keep in mind, just to let you all know, right off the bat. This past Monday was the final day that individual legislators could submit bill drafts. The Senate and Assembly Standing Committees have until February 17, and the governor has until February 21 for any bill draft related to his legislative agenda. So, this doesn't mean that those bills will come out on those dates. What that means is they have to submit their idea in a written form to the Legislative Council Bureau, who then turns that written information into a bill. So, Weeks One and Two have been, have had a lot of presentations given in committees. The committee members want to acquaint themselves with the issues that they'll be considering this legislative session. So, presentations that have been given include the State Public Charter School Authority, the Nevada Commission on School Funding, Guy Hobbs presented, the Nevada Department of Education, the Nevada Association of School Superintendents presented the Invest Plan, which we brought to you earlier, the Gwynne Center for Policy Priorities, and the Education Commission of the States. So, this week, we did have bills started, starting to be heard. The Senate Committee on Education heard two different bills that we wanted to bring attention to you all on. Senate Bill 38, which authorizes the Division of Emergency Management within the Office of the Military to share certain school emergency operations plans with local public safety agencies under specified circumstances. So, the intent of that bill is to improve coordination and preparedness for school-related emergencies if they were to occur. So, school districts will share those plans with all local government, local agencies to make sure that occurs. And then, Senate Bill 45 was heard just the other day, which updates how the State Board of Education distributes grants for career and technical education programs. It streamlines the grant process, it revises the criteria, and it lowers some of the reporting, which is good for all of us, and the obligations for public schools operating work-based learning programs. So, reducing the administrative burden on districts on that. So, there were, there was committees planned today and tomorrow. Those have been canceled. We were expected this morning at 8:00 AM to receive a presentation by the Legislative Council Bureau on the K-12 budget. That was canceled. There is a rumor that it might be heard tomorrow, but we are awaiting that decision. That'll be a last-minute decision tomorrow morning. A quick preview for next week, interim superintendent Larson Mitchell will be up in Carson City with us to provide an update on the Clark County School District to the Assembly Education Committee. That's Tuesday. At that same meeting, we'll be presenting one of our bills, AB 48, which revolves around revisions to the bullying law we've spoken to you all about. Currently, the Senate Education Committee, it was set to meet on Monday on President's Day, but due to the weather, it canceled. So, we won't see any of the Senate bills being heard until at least Wednesday. So, the weather up there has been a little crazy the last two weeks, which has caused some problems on the ability to move forward and have these bill hearings and get people into town. So, with that update, I'm open to any questions or comments the board may have.
Thank you. Trustee Zamora?
Thank you, Madam President. The only question I have is, when we're doing these updates, can we also include the sponsors for the bills? I think that would be helpful for the community, too. So, just if you can give us a sponsor for SB 38 and SB 45.
SB 38 is the Office of Emergency Management, and SB 45 is the Nevada Department of Education.
Thank you. Trustee Cavassos?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to clarify, did you say that, let's see, interim superintendent, you'll be up there on, is it February, is that Tuesday, February 18?
Yes.
And what time, I think we have a busy day that day, don't we, guys? I think we do. Governance training and just all kinds of stuff, right? What time is that presentation?
1:30 PM.
1:30. Probably about the time we'd be taking a lunch break from our governance training, right, Madam President? Something like that? So, we can support our interim superintendent?
Yes. We could work through that.
1:30, if everything goes smoothly and et cetera, right?
We are dealing with legislative time, so 1:30 legislative time.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Trustee Barron?
Yes. Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. Quick, in my experience over at Rancho High School, we had a really forward-thinking principal, Ms. Darlene Delgado. And, of course, she had the weather, she got there just in enough time to guide us through and weather through the storm through the pandemic time. And when she, but when we came back to full-time teaching, she actually, through the school budget, was able to hire three social workers, but they really weren't social workers. A couple of them were actually licensed therapists, right? And, you know, they, I think they were very, very effective in helping many of the students as we transitioned back into sometimes some extremely difficult times. And so, as I understand, there's SB 174, which has something to do, I think, with therapists in schools. And so, I'm sure that's the one, one of the ones that we're tracking, but I would take, you know, because of my prior experience, I know I personally would like to have a special interest, you know, in the tracking of this, and maybe, it's one of these things, especially, you know, if the state's willing to pay for it, you know? I mean, hey, you know, it'd be a really good thing for a lot of people. And probably including, you know, so the well-being of the, the mental well-being of the student body is, that also carries over to, of course, our administrators and faculty. So, that just, I guess, it's not so much a question, maybe just a heads up, or please look out, that kind of thing.
We, thank you, Trustee Brad Keating, for the record. SB 174 is a bill we're tracking. We're already speaking about it internally. We've met with stakeholders, a number of stakeholders on that bill already, and those conversations will continue. It is a, it will be currently, it's, as it stands, it is an unfunded mandate. So, we are looking and working with the state to see what kind of funds they could provide to allow for those ABA services to come in.
Thank you. Trustee Zamora? Oh, she's willing to, Trustee Asparz Strofigan?
So, I know that you have a brand-new newsletter, and I had some of our, the opportunity to be with the student council, advisory council, a few weeks ago, having a conversation with individuals that were like youth legislators. Is that newsletter exclusive for personnel? Is it open to the public?
Thank you, Trustee Asparz Strofigan. Todd Story, for the record. The newsletter is available to anyone who would like to subscribe, so we can equip you with that information. If you would like to share it or exchange names, then we can certainly send it to those students and invite them to subscribe themselves, whichever way you want to do it.
And so, the basis of the newsletter is to do what you're doing for us, is to show the 90?
Two.
Two bills that are being tracked. So, is there a way to put it on our, also our website, especially knowing that we're on the legislative session? Maybe we could have people access it right on the front page for a short time or for the time of the session?
We can look into that, see what that would entail. We can definitely look into that, but certainly sharing the information broadly is possible. It would be our goal.
Thank you. Trustee Zamora?
Thank you. Mine was also about the newsletter. I did see it. It does have a QR code. I was able to kind of walk around with the QR code to have folks sign up. I did notice that there was a tracker on there that shows kind of the things we're looking for. And I know previously in the last meeting, I had mentioned if we can kind of also add a column to see how it ties to our priorities as a district. And I, principals really reached out, and they thought that was really exciting, so they're able to connect some dots. So, I'm hoping if we can edit that and include that. And then, I think that was it.
Seeing no other questions, and thank you so much for the update. And we look forward to hearing our interim superintendent on February 18 at 1:30.
That was my question. Sorry for interrupting, Madam President. So, you mentioned there was a snow day today, and some things got pushed back. Is there a possibility that that presentation for the 18th also gets pushed back? If so, what is the plan to communicate with the board and everyone else that that's not happening?
Thank you, Trustee Brad Keating, for the record. So, right now, we are on schedule for that presentation to still occur. We have not been told that any changes have been made to it, although the agenda has not been posted either. Today's, there was a bill, there was going to be a bill heard and a presentation by the Washoe County School District, Superintendent Ernst. That's, that's being rescheduled to either later next week or the following week right now, but they didn't want to move currently scheduled items.
So, my only ask is, if it does, if anything, just instant communication, because as Trustee Cavassos mentioned, we have a very busy day, and that way, you know, we can find other ways to support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item number 4.02. Before I open it up, is there anyone who did not get a chance to complete a public comment card? Please do so now. And we will turn it over to Dr. Mansell and his team for Clark County School District Regulation 5127.
Madam President, members of the board, interim superintendent Larson Mitchell, Dustin Mansell, Chief Academic Officer, for the record. I am joined by Elena Kriner-Wilson, Assistant Superintendent of the Curriculum and Instruction Division, and Monica Martin, our Director of Guidance and Counseling. Today, we are here to provide a notice of intent to amend Clark County School District Regulation 5127 titled "High School Graduation Requirements." Regulation 5127 was last revised by the Board of School Trustees in 2024. The proposed amendments will align Regulation 5127 to the Nevada Department of Education's Guidance Memorandum 24-03 and to the Nevada Administrative Code 389.488 titled "Exemption from Physical Education." Madam President, with your permission, I will hand over the presentation at this time to Mrs. Kriner-Wilson and Mrs. Martin to provide the proposed amendments regarding the regulation.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, interim superintendent Larson Mitchell, for the record, Elena Kriner-Wilson, Assistant Superintendent of the Curriculum and Instruction Division. I would like to take a quick moment to thank our high school counselors, school principal and assistant principal representatives, and members of the district's science, health, physical education, and driver education department for their continued collaboration with the Nevada Department of Education, providing input and feedback for the updated Nevada Administrative Code. The reference material for item 4.02, Notice of Intent, Clark County School District Regulation 5127, outlines the proposed deletions and additions to the regulation. In addition to minor edits throughout the proposed amendment, today's presentation will focus on the proposed changes in Roman numeral one, section C. The proposed changes in this section highlight that students are allowed to be granted an exemption from the graduation requirement of physical education. This section has been revised to ensure all permissible exemptions are included in the regulation.
Madam President, members of the board, interim superintendent Larson Mitchell, for the record, Monica Martin, Director of the Guidance and Counseling Department. In section C, number one, we've added Ori Course of Study in Military Science, and we removed intended enrollment in a program which is comparable to the Course in Physical Education, and added enrollment in marching band. In section C, number two, we added participation in interscholastic athletics, on a drill team, in a dance group, or on a cheerleading squad, which are district-sponsored and completed in good standing. We removed outdated language that limited students to not more than one credit in those areas. In section C, number three, we've added participation in a competitive club activity or sport, or individual activity or sport, and we provided language for how students and families can determine which club activities and sports qualify for an exemption in physical education. These updates are consistent with the amendments made to the Nevada Administrative Code. Thank you for this opportunity to share the proposed amendments regarding Clark County School District Regulation 5127, High School Graduation Requirements. At this time, we will pause and take any questions from the board.
Thank you. Trustee Barron?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. So, one, one area that I've always felt, and I still think that there, there is not an exemption. I could be wrong, but Ballet for Clerico is not exempted, is it? I mean, you don't get a PE exemption for participating in Ballet for Clerico, do you?
That is correct. You do not. It is a class that counts for PE credit, but it is not for an exemption.
Okay. No, well, the reason why I bring it up is because, you know, it is kind of a competitive thing, because, of course, these, the members who do compete in Ballet for Clerico, they wind up competing here locally. Sometimes they go out of state to compete, right? So, it is very much a competitive. Maybe it's not a sport, but it is rigorous, and I can attest to actually walking into a Ballet for Clerico classroom right after they've been, they've been rehearsing, and you can feel the, how should I say, athletic heat? Yeah, you know exactly what I'm talking about. People are rubbing their bunions. They, I mean, it is rough. So, I think whatever we can do to get exemptions or pre-credit, and I think it would also help to drive more students into these, these, these classes that they fulfill many, they hit upon many different genres, right? You got your culture in there, you got your activity in there, right? I mean, it's really, it's extremely important. And the other one, I still don't understand, we don't offer yoga anywhere, do we? Do we? We do now?
Thank you for the question. We have a dance, flex, and tone class currently that sometimes incorporates a little bit of yoga, and I know that our PE department is working on new courses. of yoga, and I know that our PE department is working on new courses.
I'm thinking a straight out yoga, quite frankly. That will actually, you know, not only you get strong physically for the people, I don't, I don't know, dude, I don't do no yoga. You can tell because of course, you know, I'm always like on the edge, right? But it helps out with your mental wellness, and that's, that's no joke. You know, besides your physical wellness, it helps out with mental wellness. Man, I sure would like to, you know, we have to encourage some of our PE teachers to maybe get certified so they could offer it. It's a, I, I do see students like walking around the track at Rancho High School, but I think there's so much more. I mean, I guess that's good, but I think we could actually offer better, you know, just a slight upgrade to, to, oh, that's where he's going like this to me, right? Which is probably true, you know? If there's anybody who needs yoga, it's probably me. But anyhow, just, I would, I think, just, you know, yoga.
Trustee Barone, Dustin Mansel, chief academic officer for the record. I just want to correct a statement. What Ms. Martin was saying, which was accurate, is Ballet for Clorico does count as a PE credit, so you wouldn't want to exempt it because we want to use that class as credit for PE. So I just want to make sure that was very clear because I think you said it the opposite.
I said it the opposite. Yeah, because last time I walked into a class, hey man, you guys are really like burning the, you guys are really burning the calories here. And said, yeah, but we don't get credit for it. Maybe it was, I guess, maybe it's been a while since I've walked into one of the class, but I could have sworn I walked into one last year and it felt like what it feels like in here right now.
Trustee Dominguez.
There we go. Thank you, Madam President. So I think this is a great initiative. This is, this is really great that we have this going forward. I do see one little maybe technicality is that it says requests. Our registers are looking at that to, so our student doesn't necessarily have to put in that request, and maybe that's kind of part of the process that, hey, you're in band, let's not put you in PE too.
Thank you trustee Dominguez for the question. That is language from the State Department of Education, so it's their language that a student has to request the exemption because some students do not want to be exempt from PE. They might be in the marching band but still want to take PE later in the day. So it really is just a natural conversation that happens between student and counselor when they're designing their schedule for the next year.
Perfect. Thank you. And then are we informing our registers so they know to, to present that to students?
Yes, thank you for the question. It's actually their high school counselors that work with the students, but yes.
Thank you.
Trustee Cavazos.
Thank you, Madam President. And I don't know how many people with these new, new system that we have still in the queue, but I'm ready to make a motion. So just wanted to put it out there, and that would be a motion to approve 4.02 Notice of Intent Clark County School District Regulation 127. And with the thanks to the team for really cleaning up the language and making it align, and I just think that you've made it really just a little bit more compact and concise. So thank you.
Thank you. I have a main motion trustee Zamora.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with trustee Barone. It's really exciting. I grew up doing for Clorico, so trust me, it is a workout. I remember the bruises. But I would love to second trustee Cavazos' motion.
So I have a first and I have a second. There is no public comment, so if you could cast your vote. That passes seven to zero. We're going to go ahead and move on to agenda item 4.03 is, before I open it up, is there anyone who did not get a chance to complete a public speaker card? Okay, I'll turn it over to interim superintendent on 4.03.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. For the record, Brenda Larson Mitchell. We have our chief strategy officer here this evening, Ms. Coal Paul, to provide an update, actually our final use of funds report on our SIR dollars of approximately $777 million. Exciting stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Larson Mitchell. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. I am really excited to be here today to share with you our final use of funds report. This has been a labor of love for myself and hundreds of members of our team across the district and across schools. The work is really not just mine, but the, it's a culmination of many, many hours of coordinated effort by our team across the district. I've also had a stellar partner in the Give Better Group led by Jessica Rauch. Her team and I have worked together to support the deployment and accountability and communication of the implementation of SIR funds, especially as we started working through this last school budget work. Jessica and her team have done the lion's share of coordinating the effort with our team to pull this report together, so I'm eternally grateful for that support and that For the sake of context, and I can hardly believe it's been this long, but the COVID-19 pandemic state of emergency was declared in the state of Nevada almost five years ago. That kicked off the most unusual time in my careers, probably for most of us here in this room. And throughout that pandemic, we received multiple relief and recovery grants. The largest of those are on the screen here, which we refer to as SIR 1, 2, and 3. Those are all enacted by federal legislation in 2020 and 2021. Tonight's presentation and the final use of funds, funds report is solely focused on SIR 3, which was put into law with the American Rescue Plan Act in March of 2021, providing federal aid to local governments to help them recover from the COVID-19 pandemic. As Dr. Larson Mitchell said, we received just over $777 million in ARP SIR funds. The obligation deadline for those funds was September 30th, 2024, and the liquidation deadline was January 30th. The state is applying for a late liquidation extension, which would also provide additional time for liquidation of any remaining funds, but we're still kind of waiting to hear on the status of that request. We were intentional about the use of SIR 3 funds from the start. We engaged more than 13,000 stakeholders in our community in the development of our initial spending plan. Their participation informed a plan that through multiple revisions over the years has enabled the beginnings of a very strong recovery from the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. In implementing the plan, we made some really intentional decisions around prioritizing both short and long-term investments while also planning for sustainability. We wanted to use data to drive decision-making while making sure to make impactful investments on time. We wanted to use funds to increase equity and access and fulfill promises of transparency and accountability, and we wanted to invest heavily in teachers and in strengthening our community partnerships. Now at the end of this project, I can't believe that we're at the end of this project, but we have the opportunity to reflect on the investment in our schools and our students, and I'm happy to share some of those reflections with you today. I'm not going to read through the whole report, I'm just going to do kind of an overview of some of the information we have that shows that student data is showing marked improvement, that we obligated 100% of funds on time. We received commendations from the Nevada Department of Education for transparency and for our initial community engagement efforts. We applied lessons learned through the implementation, management, and monitoring of these funds across the district and other efforts. We've remained committed to transparency throughout the engagement, and we, throughout the engagement, aligned our recovery efforts to our existing strategy, and I'll share all that with you. As you, most of you already know, our investments were aligned to existing Focus 2024 priority areas, so convenient that with 2024 expired, Focus 2024 expired, and SIR 3 expired, we're all kind of coming to a close here at the same time. A lot of the projects would fit in multiple categories here, of course, but you can see the bulk of our investments support our student, our student success initiatives and our teachers, principals, and staff priority area. In each of these priority areas, we can see evidence of recovery. The bulk of the report details some of that evidence in each priority area alongside spending progress and highlights the immediate interventions and long-term investments we made with SIR 3 funds, and I'll just highlight a few of those for you quickly this evening. We made intentional investments in English Language Arts. We funded reading centers and transformation network schools. We funded an ELL endorsement for educators, tier-one instructional materials in social studies, and we adjusted existing costs into SIR 3 to enable the purchase of tier-one instructional materials for English Language Arts. You can see here on this slide and throughout the report, some reflections by those who were closest to the work throughout the engagement. These are the most exciting for me to read. Here you see Principal Renee Meacham is quoted as crediting the Reading Skills Center at her school with improving reading and comprehension skills, and Sback results for students, and even increasing her school's NSPF star rating. It's pretty exciting. And we see these kind of stories across the district. We've got improvements in ELA proficiency in elementary and high schools overall. In fact, nearly all student groups showed improvement in grades three and five, three through five, and the grade 11 ACT rates surpassed pre-pandemic rates last year, which is pretty exciting. The long-term curriculum and, and PL investments will continue to pay off, and we know we need to continue to focus on middle schools so that we can encourage to, to see some additional growth there as well in the future. Math results were impacted really early on in the pandemic. We responded early with an SIR 2 investment in mathematics tier-one instructional materials and have supported that implementation with SIR 3 funded professional learning aligned to the tier-one instructional materials. You can see a testament from Blair Rodriguez here on the slide, who is an assistant principal at Gibson Elementary School, who speaks to the impact of high-quality tier-one instructional materials and aligned coaching on the transfer of mathematics knowledge from grade to grade, which is great, especially as I know my ninth grader is struggling with her math homework at home right now, my text messages are telling me. Our early investments here in math have paid off really well in elementary and middle grades, notably students receiving special education services are among the first groups to recover to pre-pandemic levels in grade six and eight, six through eight and 11. In fact, our mathematics progress has been recognized nationally. We were invited to share our strategies with other large school districts across the country who are hoping to replicate our success here. So that's been pretty exciting. We also made a significant investment in tier ones, tier-one instructional materials for science. We're in the third year of a seven-year professional learning plan aligned with these new materials. Fertitta, middle school science teacher here, Joshua Abayera, he credits the professional learning with helping him grow as a teacher and helping him engage students in science curriculum that prepares them well for high school. And the kicker here is even if they move between schools in the district, a benefit of common tier-one instructional materials across the district. We're seeing really promising results here too. On the grade eight, science criterion reference tests, every student group saw improvement last year. What really stands out for me in this data is this is the same cohort of students who were tested in grade five in 2021, and that cohort shows a remarkable increase from 15.2% you can see in that top left corner, to 33.1% by eighth grade, which is a remarkable improvement for that cohort in science. To support college and career readiness, we've successfully integrated new career exploration courses in the middle school classrooms encompassing a wide range of discipline, manufacturing, computers, health, STEM, financial literacy. The whole point here is to empower students to make informed decisions regarding their high school courses and future careers in high-demand fields. Colton Roberts is a teacher at Kenny Gwynn Middle School, and he credits here the hands-on process or projects and inquiry-based learning in these courses with inspiring students to pursue STEM career pathways in high school. These courses are contributing to a steady increase in college and career-ready diplomas over the last three years, which you can see are peaked now at 6,000. We did also make several investment, that's investments that support learning across all these content areas. Elementary principals were able to make investment decisions to meet the needs of their individual schools. We supported the continued transition and maintenance of a one-to-one student-to-computer environment with technology and online curriculum and professional development resources. We provided materials for social emotional learning and teacher clarity guides that help teachers plan and implement standards-based instruction. Kelly Casino here, a grade four teacher at Goins Elementary School, shares with us that the SEL, the social emotional learning curriculum has been a game changer in her classroom, helping students manage emotions, solve problems, and show empathy. That leads us really well into the impact of the pandemic on students' wellness, mental health, and safety, which we have talked about many times in this room and across the country. And we implemented immediate and long-term initiatives in response to those concerns as well. We implemented the district-wide well-being survey, the Panorama Survey, to help identify and support students in need, and we had increased our crisis response team to respond to the very real and very scary increase we were observing of students in crisis during the pandemic. We also supported ongoing COVID-19 testing when it was appropriate by developing a mobile health clinic and mobile health centers, and responded to safety concerns upon return to full-time face-to-face instruction with a number of specific safety initiatives, the visitor management system, crisis alert, and signal-blocking pouches for cell phones. That non-locking, signal-blocking cellphone pouch initiative, thank you, Dr. Larson Mitchell, helped Braden Bolton, who is a senior quoted here, he's a senior at Arbor View High School. He credits those, those pouches with increasing his focusing on learning and improving his grades. I'm going to tell my kids that too. So we see improvements across the board in wellness, mental health, and safety. We've got improvements in chronic absenteeism, which Mr. McPartlin and team keep sharing with you. We also, I'm excited to show increases in participation in the well-being while at the same time decreasing the number of students requesting assistance, helping us answer the question, are we reaching them? And are they able to request, are they actually feeling better about the situations they're in? We owe so much of this work and these results to the teachers, principals, and staff who have been willing to adapt to the changing teaching and learning environments through these last few years. We know that the classroom teacher is the number one influence on student achievement, and we knew throughout all this that it was critical we took action to retain and support the teachers that we had through retention bonuses, professional learning, and leadership opportunities, and also to increase our ranks through various teacher pipeline initiatives. Rose Turner here is pictured in both this current report and last year's report, and this is exciting because she is a kindergarten teacher who came into teaching through our educator pipeline program. She's a CCSD graduate, and she was a support professional who was seeking a different way to serve her community, and she is now paying it forward by being a kindergarten teacher herself, which is so cool. All of these initiatives contributed to an increase in retention and recruitment, of course, leading to a direct impact on students by the number of teachers hired for, to make sure we have students with teachers in their classrooms. We also implemented a number of initiatives that supported the ongoing mitigation in response to the COVID-19 health impacts, both in the short and long term. Jennifer Budzinski is a director in our Health Services Department, and she recognized the immediate benefit of the mobile health clinic, which was one of those investments, with the initial response to the COVID-19 pandemic, but also the continued support of that clinic for health testing to ensure a safer community even beyond the pandemic itself. Our engagement in pandemic mitigation and response measures can be illustrated in the volume of case management sessions. You can see here, we can see continually increased services by school-based health, school-based health centers and health-related partnerships, and by an increased recipients of health services professional learning across the district. Like I said before, from the very release of ARP SIR 3, we've partnered with parents and community first to determine the suspending, the spending priorities that would meet pandemic impact needs, and then to provide learning acceleration and wraparound support through services provided by trusted community partners. One of those partners is communities and schools, and Debbie Palacios, the Southern Nevada Executive Director, speaks here to the impact of these investments and significantly expanding communities, communities and schools reach to an additional 77,000 students, thanks to SIR 3 investments. We supported almost 50 new community partnerships, and through these funds also implemented a public data dashboard, which has seen over 10,000 users accessing the transparent data that is now available to the public just last year. Aligned with balanced governance and leadership from our strategic plan, we made specific investments aligned to ensuring that all of the SIR funds were spent in alignment with our guiding principles and that funded projects were implemented with the highest level of fidelity. We actively monitored the implementation of all the projects financed by SIR 3 and continued to produce annual reports for you and the public detailing updates on those initiatives. We additionally evaluated the effectiveness of these funded projects and strategized for long-term sustainability along the way. Part of that investment was seeking a third-party evaluation of our funding decisions, and we did so with Hanover Research, a well-respected research and analytics firm. They thoroughly reviewed our strategic investment of ARP SIR 3 funds and validated our investment Part of that work helped us ensure that we fulfilled the promises we made to our community. We implemented a thorough planning process. We created detailed implementation plans. We identified interim milestones and measures of success throughout the investments, and we developed detailed budgets for all individual ARP SIR 3 funded projects. We established a rig- a rigorous monitoring system, which included quarterly public reports and comprehensive annual reflections, which we posted on future.ccsd.net. These are supplemented by quarterly progress reviews at the leadership level, ensuring that project spending and implementation remained on track, and then that we were able to make necessary adjustments promptly. Thanks to these efforts, like I said, our spending remained on track throughout the engagement. We were making progress ahead of schedule. We obligated 100% on time. And also, this improvement cycle allowed us to reallocate funding in response to student data trends or concerns about implementation and spending progress along the way, which was really great. Just a real, the only reason I included this slide is because I'm super proud of the accountability system we implemented, and then we mirrored that system with how we implemented the end of the Focus 2024 strategic plan. We implemented a whole new level of project management. There are templates, requirements, individual meetings with project leads, and then we implemented multi-lever progress reporting and progress monitoring and reporting. Individual project leads will, would report with their unit chiefs, unit chiefs and leadership would report together. At all of those intervals, we had the opportunity for course correction. We ended up with six revisions to our spending plan to the state that the state approved, which allowed us to really utilize those funds to the best of our ability to support our kids throughout the recovery. Finally, we're kind of at the point where we've been, we've been looking for this point all along. We wanted to know, at the end of this, that we did our best to make decisions that would last us a long time and not get us into trouble with, in terms of an SR cliff. We've been making decisions at the district level about which ones of these SR investments we wanted to continue at the central office funds. Schools have had to make similar decisions. This all fits perfectly in alignment with the conversations we're having about school budgets right now. I'm aware of districts who are making decisions regarding hundreds of millions-of-dollar-level SR cliffs, and we very gratefully are not dealing with that level of a cliff. We also have schools who have been criticized for retaining carry-forward funds. I think those carry-forward funds now are making the cliff a little bit more of a steep hill for many of those schools, and maybe just stretching out the impacts of the loss of these funds into our kind of system over the next year or two, maybe three. We know we will be seeing the elimination of some short- and long-term positions. We already started doing that last year. There are programs that we will need to make decisions about this year and continuing into the future. We also know that our support level to schools requires funding, and so some of that will have to change a little bit as we go. These are all fluid discussions that we have constantly. We've been having them the whole time. We will continue to have them as we work with schools and school budgeting through this current budget cycle and into the fall. And with that, I'm really happy to share with you those successes, like I said, on behalf of the whole team, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the trustees? Trustee, let's see who's in the queue. Biassadi, please.
Hi. Thank you for all your thorough work. It's been quite a journey. You did mention that some of the programs were being eliminated. Can you give us an example of what type of program it is?
Sure. Madam President, members of the, oh, it's habit, sorry. Trustee Biassadi, Kelly Kowalpaul for the record. The biggest one that comes to mind is the reduction of technology services support. That has shown up in this room a lot. We know that those resources cost a lot of money. The team to support the resources are very expensive. We made a decision centrally to reduce the central support. Schools are having to make decisions about how much of that support they can afford in their current budgets and things like that.
Do you have another, trustee Stevens, oh, no, Zamora.
Thank you, Madam President. Kelly, this is a disclaimer. It's not about you, okay? But I was actually part of that community part back in 2021, hosting events to try to get the community input for how we're going to spend SR3 funds. And then I was lucky enough to get on the Community Advisory Committee to get all those responses back and be able to come up with a plan. I think this is definitely a learning lesson moving forward because that committee was made out of nine people, and there was never any follow-up from that. And it's people who are still here, who are still in our community, who are still dedicated to our students. So this is all great to present, but I think it's for us, as my colleagues, to always keep in mind, like, we have to start something and follow through, especially if we're opening that door. So that was my only comment I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Stevens?
Thank you for this report. As I'm looking through this, there was, there was one area that kind of struck me as we think about kind of the cliff that you're talking about, right? And thankfully, we're not experiencing, you know, hundreds of millions, you know, multiple schools. But we are definitely experiencing some of that loss. And as we do that, I'm wondering if there is a strategic plan for how we determine what things don't fit for us, so that it doesn't, it doesn't feel like it's hurting us to take something away. So for example, when I look at the new major community partnerships, I love community partnerships. I think that there's a lot of great organizations in our community that want to do and can do great things for our kids. However, I also know that sometimes we'll enter into partnerships where, and I know this just from my professional work, that sometimes you'll enter into partnerships where if there's not, it's kind of like grant writing, right? If there's not a, an outcome that is clearly, clearly defined, this is the outcome we'd like to have, and we're going to, we're going to invest into this partnership, but you have to meet these, this criteria. If, I'm wondering if we have something like that in place with some of these partnerships so that we know, like, hey, we invested X amount of dollars with these SR funds, but we got to the end of this partnership and realized that that desired outcome didn't happen. So we're going to now be able to remove those funds because we don't really have them anyways, but instead of taking it away from this program or from this partnership, we can actually take it away from those that aren't serving us well. Do we have anything like that in place, any kind of strategy to help us determine where, where the best spots are to make those removals or those changes?
Sure. Trustee Stevens, for specifically the SR-funded community partnership engagements, we did implement regular quarterly monitoring of the level of engagement that the community groups were seeing with students. All of those engagements that were SR-funded were time-bound, so none of them automatically continue. There are community partners with whom we have other longstanding partnerships. Those continue as if, as they would, and those decisions are made normally. This is one area, though, where I think we learned a valuable lesson along that line, where we could very easily have conversations with partners who were not engaging with a lot of students. In some cases, those, the causes of those lower numbers were on our side. There was some obstruction to engaging or getting people fingerprinted or something, things like that. But in some cases, the problem was on the vendor's side, and some of those engagements did not end up being three-year engagements. So we were able to make those decisions, and then what happens is, what happened is the funds that were initially budgeted for those engagements got brought back centrally. As a leadership team, we prioritized other needs as we continued to review student data, teacher data, things like that, so that we could reprioritize those funds toward things that we thought were working. This is one of the things that we can implement in the way we do things broader, on a broader level at the district.
Thank you. Trustee Satori?
My question was on community partnerships, so you just answered it. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Asparza Stoffigan?
Kelly, this is huge undertaking. So, like you said, and I appreciate true leaders really share the credit and also the burden because the decisions had to be made, and so thank you and kudos to the team. My question back to clarity, did you say that the state, I know that the expiration was, it sunsetted, but because of the amount, is there an opportunity for any funding that could potentially come back if that were approved?
Yeah, good question. Let me clarify that a little bit. No, there's not. The obligation period expired. That was September 30. That means we had to engage in a commitment to spend the funds, a contract or something like that by September 30, and we have done so. Where we're at in terms of actual spend is at 99 point, we're less than 1% unspent, unliquidated. We made that decision intentionally because the federal government offered a late liquidation option, which they had done for SR1 and SR2. We presumed and were, had confirmation from the state that they would be applying. It has gotten a little bit later than we anticipated right now, so we extended some of our project work so that we were able to kind of stretch out to the support where we could. It was limited. You can't pay for salaries and things like that, but we were able to stretch a few of the engagements one more year by planning for late liquidation. That, that less than 1% is what we are hoping for the state to complete the late liquidation application for, so that we can continue with those efforts and receive those funds back. Even if they don't, however, we'll have to make some adjustments internally, but I would call that 99-point-something percent of success anyways. Pretty cool.
Thank you, because that was perked someone's ears, and I received it in real time. The next part I want to give it is a granular story. I had a great conversation with a parent this past week, and the reason I bring this up is the parent was saying they volunteered at a school, and they noticed the behaviors, and this is an elementary level, have been very extremely different. And I hear that, we hear that all the time. So I really want to point out that I appreciate that the district will continue to provide the funding for the Hazel Health and the Carisalas. And I know that, you know, that reduction of students asking for assistance was huge on slide 16, because it goes from like 22% to, I think, 18, and that's the goal. We want that number to be zero. So I guess my question now would be, talking to the parent, like, she wanted to know what kind of supports moving forward. Maybe it's partnerships, maybe it's training for teachers, but I know it's a big question, but that part of it is, are we having conversations with our SOTs? And because I know you're over that as well, to kind of hear from them after this cliff has been spent. The money is gone.
Yeah, trustee, trustee Asparza Stoffigan, that's not a conversation we have with SOTs. I try, I, in that hat, I try very hard to allow the SOTs to fulfill their role as advisory and assistance to the principal of each school. They are not our team. They are a school's team. However, I do think it would be worthwhile to gather feedback from our community as a whole on these types of things. And the continued support of the mental health system that we put into place with SR is something that Dr. Larson Mitchell has committed to, that we had committed to for next year. So I don't foresee that changing anytime soon. It does require funding, though, and some of that is slated for additional federal funding, which is a little bit in question at this point. So we'll be keeping an eye on a kind of how that all, how that all kind of irons out as we start seeing federal funding allocations come up here in the spring.
So I think just a recommendation, and you said it, I think getting feedback from the community, from our parents, from our teachers, on what do they need to continue because we know that we're in a different landscape moving forward and how this can help with what we're seeing in the classroom. So I just think that is something I'll make sure I'll follow up with interim superintendent to see what we can do, because I know that's going to be the challenge going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Cavassos?
Thank you, Madam President. Trustee Asparza Stoffigan saves me a lot of time with asking my questions first. So thank you. Kelly, you have answered them as far as what she was just asking about the timeline. So I just want to commend you and your team. I feel like we've gone like full circle here, and especially what we were just talking about a moment ago, and I brought that up at the last legislative update, that's going to take money. And so, like, for instance, when we were talking about, I think it was SB 174, that it's an unfunded mandate. So we would love to have therapists on every single campus. Now, we're kind of doing what we can right now, but just kind of letting people know that there are referrals from our schools, our social workers, our psychologists, the behavioral specialists, they do make referrals to the private sector when they do get to a position in a tier-two or tier-three. But they couldn't have done that without the foundation that you guys have laid for our priorities in the mental health and social and social-emotional sector. So I thank you so much for, and even for you having to do all of this tonight by yourself. You read that entire thing. So thank you so much, and we really appreciate your hard work.
Thank you. Trustee Biassadi?
Hi. I had a follow-up question. Do we have an estimate on the funds left to liquidate? I know you said it was less than 1%, but that could very well be into the millions.
It is into the millions. I don't have the number. I should have brought it with me. That's an obvious question, but I can provide that to you.
And I do have another question to that. Can those funds be rerouted to prevent layoffs or future school program cuts?
They cannot be rerouted at this point because the obligation deadline has passed. So we've committed to the use of the funds.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We're gonna, see no other questions. I'm gonna go to public comment on this one. We have Dr. Bemo, if you'd like to come up.
Good evening. Tiffany Bemo for the record again. I was, I had a whole speech written, but I don't even know what I want to say anymore. Because I don't know if this is supposed to be good or bad, because I'm confused by these numbers, because there's not a lot, right? Like, there's, there's not a lot of percentage point growth. So yay, I guess, pat us on the back for 2%. I don't, I don't know what we're doing. But I do want to know, is it possible to sell those giant air purifiers that we never used for COVID and make money back there? Because ours is sitting in a closet. And I know the one at Clark is sitting in the closet, and we never used them. So maybe we can recoup some of those losses? Or is that against the SR funds? I don't know. But I don't, I don't know. I don't know anymore. I'm very confused. I hope that the state legislature doesn't use our, our growth information when they're looking at our funding, because even though the kids are super cute in this presentation, as a teacher, this presentation does not make me feel good about this growth that we supposedly made, because it doesn't look like growth on paper. Sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Bemo. With that, I'll entertain a motion to... Do we have to make a motion to accept the report? Legal counsel, I think that's what I'm looking at. It doesn't say it, but... Oh, you just closed your agenda. I'm sorry. That's okay. I think it's to accept the report on the American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. So with that, trustee Dominguez?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to accept Agenda Item 4.03, American Rescue Plan, to accept the report.
Thank you. And trustee Henry?
Thank you. I will second.
I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. That passes seven to zero. With that, we're going to go ahead and go on to public comment, 5.01. These are public comment items that are not on the agenda. And is Mr. Bayless still here? Yes. Please come forward. And then I have Peyton. Peyton, are you still here? Okay, come on up to this. Go ahead, Mr. Bayless.
Hi, James Bayless for the record. So I guess my topic, it's been a while, going, going like I was talking about with the other, other agenda. This is my third attorney that he's made drop me, which we all know is illegal. So I'm, I'm about to be going to, I spoke to Metro. They told me I have to go to your guys' PD to file obstruction of justice charges on my lawyer. So Mr. Ibarra's name will be in there. Just giving everybody a heads-up on that. So since, obviously, I was speaking with the business community, they addressed with me, I should probably get a new liaison since mine was malfunctioned. Ms. Boost Money, if you could pick one of your trustees that you trust that could help me facilitate all the in-and-outs of that, would be great. Ms. Stevens would be a great one, because she's awesome. Any of you guys are pretty awesome, a lot better than the last crowd we had. So... So I appreciate a lot of the, a lot of the feedback that I've been getting from the newer crowds and actually getting some sort of assistance is awesome. I would like to address the one major factor that we have on the scenario at hand, when in federal court, only two percent of cases see the courthouse. You have the director of compliance, which is Mr. Ibarra, he's also in charge of case enforcement. So wouldn't he be the one stopping the cases? Could be a big problem why you guys don't get a lot of feedback from your community if you're being gagged. Something I brought up in court, and I'll bring up here, my fiancee, Crystal Schneider, enlightened me about a contract that she had from a trustee that's no longer I see that's here. She married Louis, her uncle. The guy was running for a judge in District One. After she got served, wouldn't that be a conflict of interest massively? Because she didn't know Louis Pryor. I've been married, I've been, was with that family for ten years, never saw her face. I think I would have known. So would be appreciated if you guys would address these situations, because we're going to be obviously working on some situations. A general counsel, if you guys would be maybe super, superventure guys' counsel to have them answer a phone, so we could try to settle this problem and get it to go away, would be great. Because prolonging it and just ignoring it, all it's going to do is get you guys in Rico for the legal system. We have Dan off the top. He's a civil division, he covers all fifty states. Wrongful arrest, mine plus my kids? That's a Rico for the legal system completely. And if my case falls and it's because of Dan, that makes you guys even, and then that puts the new panel that I'm trying.
Thank you, Mr. Bayless. Ms. Peyton?
Good evening. I'm Peyton Burtzell, the junior class president at Liberty High School, and I've started a petition with a group of my fellow students to urge CCSD when it comes to graduation. So in CCSD, the Advanced Honors Diploma is only available to the class of twenty twenty-five and before. So this diploma gave us the opportunity to separate ourselves from our peers during graduation by allowing us to walk across the stage in a white gown and receiving recognition for academic success that way. The white gown may seem trivial, but high achieving students, to high achieving students, it represents everything we've worked for our entire academic career. And it's disheartening to see our hard work go unrecognized for the first time. As an involved advanced placement student, it agonizes me to see the work of myself and my peers go overlooked. With that being said, myself and over five hundred others agree that those graduating with the advanced diploma, which is similar in academic rigor in comparison to the advanced honors diploma, should be recognized for our achievements. And we've launched, we have launched a project wrapped in white with the support of teachers and our principal at Liberty High School, Mr. Derek Bello. We've reached other schools in our area, teachers, parents, students, CCSD staff, and other communities in our area. So I came here today in hopes of gaining your support with our academic endeavors and encouraging us to gain experience with the academic rigor to help prepare us for college. And by doing so, we will be recognized for going above and beyond in our academic careers. Though this will not deter us from challenging ourselves academically, it may do so to our peers and future CCSD students. So with your support, we hope to regain the opportunity to walk the stage in white this upcoming school year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Mr. Gonzalez Rodrigo, and then also Yvonne. Meneses, thank you.
Thank you. Antes de empezar, mi intervención dura tres minutos, pero la intérprete tendría que usar tres minutos, ¿está bien?
Sí, sí, está bien.
Okay, before I start, I just wanted to know that I only had three minutes to talk about my topic, and it would take another three minutes, probably goes someone who needs an interpreter, is that okay with you guys?
Oh, you're talking a total of six minutes?
Well, yes.
We'll work with you, keep going.
Thank you. Okay. Mi nombre es Rodrigo Gonzalez. Soy organizador comunitario de Chispa Nevada. Chispa es un programa no partidista y sin fines de lucro, y fue creado por la Liga de votantes por la conservación. Chispa está enfocado en la lucha por la conservación del medio ambiente.
My name is Rodrigo Gonzalez. I am a community organizer of Chispa Nevada. Chispa is a nonpartisan, nonprofit program, and was created by the League of Voters for Conservation. Chispa is focused on the light, on the fight for the conservation of the environment.
El humo de los autobuses escolares a diesel es perjudicial para la salud pública de los estudiantes, que los pone en riesgo de desarrollar enfermedades respiratorias, afecciones graves como cáncer y asma. Estos autobuses también emiten altos niveles de gases efecto invernadero como el dióxido carbono, que contribuyen directamente al cambio climático. Las comunidades de color tienen más probabilidades de viajar en estos autobuses.
The smoke from diesel school buses is harmful to the physical health of students, which puts them at risk of developing respiratory diseases, serious conditions such as cancer and asthma. These buses also emit high levels of greenhouse gases, such as carbon dioxide, which directly contributes to climate change. Color communities are more likely to travel on these buses.
Quiero hacer una breve historia sobre nuestra campaña Clean Buses for Healthy Niños. En dos mil diecisiete, Chispa lanzó su campaña Clean Buses for Healthy Niños, y la campaña pedía a los gobernadores estatales que utilizaran los fondos del acuerdo con Volkswagen otorgados a todos los estados para invertir en autobuses escolares eléctricos.
I want to make a brief story about CBHN Bell. In two thousand seventeen, Chispa launched its Clean Buses for Healthy Children campaign. CBHN, the campaign asked state governors to use the funds from the, from the agreement with Volkswagen granted to all states to invest in electric school buses.
Chispa Nevada comenzó por recoger firmas de padres y miembros de la comunidad por una petición que fue entregada en el dos mil diecisiete al entonces gobernador Sandoval, con al menos cuatro mil nombres. El gobernador Sandoval no tomó ninguna medida.
Chispa Nevada began by collecting signatures from parents and community members for a petition that was delivered in two thousand seventeen to then Governor Sandoval with at least four thousand names. Governor Sandoval took no action.
Durante la sesión legislativa del dos mil diecinueve, Chispa Nevada trabajó con aliados para impulsar la SB dos noventa y nueve, que autoriza que los fondos del programa de demostración de infraestructura de vehículos eléctricos EVIT de Nevada Energy se utilizaran para autobuses escolares eléctricos. Padres, jóvenes y miembros de la comunidad fueron llevados a Carson City donde se abogó con éxito por la aprobación del proyecto de ley.
During the two, twenty nineteen legislative session, Chispa Nevada worked with allies to promote SB two ninety-nine, which authorizes funds from NB Energy's Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Demonstration Program to be used for electric school buses. Parents, youth, and community members were taken to Carson City, where he successfully advocated for the PEP, for the approval of the bill.
El Distrito escolar del condado de Clark utilizó fondos EVIT de la SB dos noventa y nueve en combinación con fondos de la participación de Nevada en el acuerdo Volkswagen para invertir en sus cuatro primeros autobuses escolares eléctricos. Estos autobuses salieron a las calles a principios de el veinte veintitrés.
The Clark County School District used SB two ninety-nine funds in combination with funds from Nevada's participation in the Volkswagen agreement to invest in its first four electrical school buses. These buses took to the streets in early two thousand twenty-three.
Posteriormente, el Congreso de Estados Unidos aprobó la ley bipartidista de infraestructura en el veinte veintiuno, que creó el programa de autobuses escolares limpios destinando cinco mil millones de dólares a la Agencia de Protección Ambiental. Esta agencia lanzó la primera ronda de este programa de autobuses escolares limpios en el dos mil veintidós, ofreciendo quinientos millones de dólares en subvenciones. El Distrito escolar del condado de Clark solicitó y recibió una subversión de casi diez millones de dólares para veinticinco autobuses escolares eléctricos, lo cual Chispa Nevada y sus miembros lo agradecen y queremos también mostrar nuestro interés de que el Distrito escolar del condado de Clark siga aplicando a EPA para obtener más recursos y continúe adquiriendo más autobuses eléctricos. Gracias.
Subsequently, the United States Congress approved the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act in two thousand twenty-one, which created the program of clean school buses, allocating five billion dollars to the EPA. The EPA launched the first round of the CSVP in two thousand twenty-two, offering five hundred, five hundred million in grants. The CCSD applied for and received a grant of nearly ten million for twenty-five electric school buses, which Chispa Nevada and its members appreciate, and we want to show our interest in the CCSD continuing to apply the EPA to obtain more resources and continue acquiring more electric buses. Thank you.
Muchas gracias. Usted también?
No.
No.
I am speaking.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. My name is Yvonne Meneses, and I'm a volunteer from Chispa Nevada. I've been in the Clean Buses Healthy Niños campaign since Chispa Nevada started in two thousand seventeen. I've been in the fight since then, till now, along with more volunteers to replace the school buses that operates with diesel for electrical buses. Four school electrical buses are already operating in Las Vegas area. Thanks to the efforts of our volunteers like me, we have collected signatures, knocking doors, going to churches, school, community events. Thanks to the resources that CCSD had acquired, we have more, twenty-four more electrical buses. In our campaign, Clean Buses for Healthy Niño, we keep working with CCSD so they can apply to EPA for more resources, to acquire more electrical buses. We still collecting signatures in events. We want, we want to express our interest to continue acquiring more electrical buses. We encourage apply for more resources to EPA. We're in the fight and we won't stop. Our main goal is to protect the most vulnerable, which is our children. They are the ones that are more affected by fossil fuels the school buses operate that cause diseases to the lungs.
Thank you so much. Do we have a Dan Turner still? And then Dr. Bemo, you'll be right after you.
How's everybody doing?
Awesome, thank you.
Good. Sorry you got to stay in here with this big gorilla for a second, but you know, I want to talk about lunchtime nutrition of students. I'm a type two diabetic in remission. I grew up dirt poor, and I got out of that by becoming a pro athlete. I spent twelve years on a pro wrestling tour. When I stopped and went in the business world, I gained a hundred and ninety pounds on over seven thousand units of insulin a month. And I ended up buying a wellness, I own a number of companies, I ended up buying a wellness company, and we're doing a lot with type two diabetics. And I've decided to try to go to where it all starts, is with our children, right? Kids are born with a clean slate, they don't know anything about anything. And it's up to us as adults to, to show them the way. And I'm excited because I've heard conversations about your lunchtime menus and stuff. I printed out a couple of lunchtime menus, you've got something on here called a cinnamon oat muffin flat, twenty-three grams of sugar. Twenty-two grams of that are added sugar, is what we're pumping into kids. Who are going into class, and teachers are getting frustrated, right? Trying to teach children who are on such a spike of, of sugar, then they crash, teachers can't teach, and the kids can't learn, right? But if, if, and I don't expect everybody to know these kind of things, because you're not nutritionalist, you've got something on your menu called dragon punch. I noticed you're all drinking water, so you're not prepared to drink dragon punch, but you're feeding this to the students, right? Ready for this one? Twenty-two grams of sugar, that's just in the fruit juice. Twenty-two grams of sugar, and that's send them into a class and try to get them to learn. Why is your kid coming home hungry? Because when they get these spikes like this, they drop, they, you know, they're chasing dopamine, and when they stop, and, and it's just empty calories, and there's no protein. Now, one of the things on this cinnamon oat thing that I was talking about earlier, I don't even know what that is, forty-seven grams of carbs, you know, a simple cheese omelet, two point two grams of carbs, thirty-one grams of fat, and twenty-seven grams of protein. How full would a student be? How much more attention could they pay to their teachers with a change, a slight change in nutrition? What I liked today was, you guys talked about, hey, we got to do something, but I'm going to tell you something, one of the things I do, I do multimillion dollar turnarounds of companies. And I got fifty-two percent in math, by the way, in school. And when my teacher handed out the math test, when he got to my desk, he said, "Thank God you can tackle." He still came to see me perform in front of thousands of people in the arena as a pro wrestler, and told my brother that he always got to do something. The point is, what I do with my companies is I take control and I take action. If we're just going to talk about it, it's going to be a forever loop. Somebody up here has to take that first step and take action, so we can get to the grassroots of our students, of our children, and stop this pandemic that's hitting half the...
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Appreciate you all.
Dr. Bemo, and then Ms. Henderson?
Tiffany Bemo for the record. Last meeting, I started talking about funding, and I ran out of time. To refresh, schools are funded in our district at different rates. One-star elementary schools are funded at different percentages than three-star elementary schools. Magnet and CTA schools are funded differently than comprehensive high schools. The way it was explained to us, comprehensive high school students are worth eighty-four percent of funding, whereas Magnet and CTA students are worth a hundred and fifteen percent plus in funding dollars. That doesn't really seem to make sense, especially considering these schools get students that apply to be in their programs. But again, I think that equity, maybe even equality, is just dead over here. This is a model that needs to be rectified. I'm not sure who decided that one kid is worth more than another. It's kind of like what happened at the DECA State Conference, when the private schools, who had better funding, private competitions, and community judges come in and work with these students, swept in the state leadership elections and won a majority of competition. Comprehensive high schools didn't really stand a chance against the odds they faced. Heck, a lot of the Magnet and CTA schools didn't stand a chance against the tide of private schools this year. Funding is on a lot of people's minds, and one thing I think is abhorrent with regard to funding, is trying to blame teacher salaries for any budget shortfalls or reasons why programs are being cut. Teacher salaries are inequitable as it is. Veteran teachers got the short end of the new contract stick in a very major way. And to blame any of them for the budget shortfall when no cuts were made at Central is just icky. I would like to request, however, no, not toner, although if you have an extra one, I'll take it, I would like to request that if you, that you remember that we are people too. Behind the dollar signs and budget line items are people, people who give up their free time to grade at home, to sit in these meetings, to invest in their communities, people who love this job and care about their students, even when they drive them crazy. Perhaps it's time to take a little off the plates of our teachers. For example, if you're going to force teachers to use canned lesson plans, why do we have to write separate lesson plans? You're coming in and playing gotcha politics to catch teachers not using the script, take writing separate lesson plans off of our plates, and let us use the canned lesson plans you bought and paid for. It makes sense. You have an entire department devoted to the curriculum hub, and the lesson plans on there, why can't those be enough? Why do teachers need to write individual lesson plans and success criteria and learning intentions and all the hoops if you purchased all these fancy things for us to use? Take a little off our plates, let us teach, stop blaming teachers for all the problems, help the teachers that need help, and leave the ones alone who don't need to, or need help, sorry. Let us do the job you pay us to do. Also, there are schools that offer yoga, but they don't call it yoga to get around doing yoga. Sorry, no. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bemo. Ms. Henderson, and then after Ian, if you're still in the audience?
Done.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, CCSD Board, and a warm welcome to our new trustees. My name is Shelby Henderson, and I'm proud to represent Boyce Town, Nevada, on behalf of my executive director, John Etzel, who sends his well wishes but could not be here due to our own board meeting tonight. Boyce Town has served the Las Vegas community for over thirty years, and has been directly partnering with the Clark County School District for over ten now. Our in-home family service program works directly with families, equipping parents with tools to create positive home environments. Over the last three years, more than ninety percent of the families we have supported have seen reductions in abuse and neglect, improved school attendance and graduation rates, fewer interactions with law and fewer interactions with law enforcement and stronger family relationships in their homes. In fact, ninety-six percent of families reported a positive impact on their children and household. Beyond homes, we support the CCSD schools at all levels. In 2024 alone, Boystown partnered with over thirty schools, providing educators and administrators training to create positive school climates and equip staff with proactive restorative approaches to student behavioral and social emotional needs. Additionally, our school support specialists serve nearly seventy schools, directly assisting over five thousand students. We appreciate our partnership with the district and UNLV and are in the early stages of a trial that shows promising results, in particular around chronic absenteeism. Early reports show that students on our caseloads are more than fifty percent more likely to attend school than peers of a similar background. Imagine those positive results if those numbers were spread out over years. But the numbers don't tell the full story. I've seen students that were once fighting at lunch now running their school store. I've seen families once struggling to get kids to school now having students on track to graduate. Teachers who once struggled to get students to focus for a single lesson can teach the entire day. My staff have helped students receive IEPs, guided parents through disciplinary processes, provided teachers with lessons on coping and communication skills for their students, and worked with school admin to build stronger, more effective discipline and support systems. Across all of our services, Boystown Nevada has impacted almost thirty-five thousand students in Clark County. Despite budget challenges and uncertain political climate, we remain committed to serving our community in both homes and in our schools for the 2025-2026 school year. We appreciate your dedication to the same mission and we look forward to continuing that partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Ian Fenty, are you still in the audience? If not, we have two more. Ms. Cridell and then Teri Schuman. Are you still here? Okay, wonderful.
Good evening. Vicki Cridell for the record. So first I want to say after listening to the presentation on how ESSER funds was used, I was fortunate to get the benefit of the ELAB certification paid for by the district. Was fantastic. I appreciate that very much. And we also, through the use of ESSER funds and other funding, was able to begin our Reading Skill Center. And we've done great work. Last year, we have the largest reading skill center in the district, which we're very proud of. And we did our part to help bring our school from one star to three stars in a year, which is very rare. Well, this next year, we have no reading skill center. The budget cuts have forced our school to close their reading skill center. All the work that we've been doing in some, let me rephrase that, some of the work that we've been doing will now be undone because of the budget shortfall. And I've been teaching twenty-two years. I get it. There's lean times and there's times when we have more funding. I understand that. But what's frustrating to me, and I understand this is not a Clark County School District funding formula. This is from the state of Nevada. But we went from one star to three stars and because of that lost a lot of funding. So all of the programs we put together, all of the tier-two intervention groups that we started, the staff that we brought in to do all these things, is now gone because we've lost the funding because we made growth. How does that incentivize schools to build programs to help students make growth if when you reach those goals, you lose the funding? So I want to encourage you when you're looking at, I know I'm going to be doing this, but when you're looking at lobbying to the state legislature about our funding, to talk to them about things like this. Because let me tell you, if you haven't seen a group of staff at a school be shell shocked when they find out that we're losing all of these things we worked so hard for. You should have been at my school in the staff meeting to hear about the cuts. And this is happening across the whole district. We are going to lose so many good people because they're going to go somewhere where they feel like they can work in a classroom or at a job where they can use their experience. I won't be teaching reading next year. I don't know what I'm going to be teaching next year. I know I'll have a job. I've been in the district long enough to keep my job and I'm not going to be surplus. But there's a lot of us that are in that situation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Go ahead.
Good evening. Most of you know me. My name is Terisha and I'm a teacher family assistant in one of our elementary schools. Our class consists of five typical peers and between seven and eight autistic students aged three to five years old. I have been a TFA for the past seven years in different schools, holding different positions. On September thirteenth, while we were at lunch, one of our students decided he wanted to take a walk in the hallway. So my first reaction was to go and bring him back inside the cafeteria. But when I did, I reached for his hand and he fell. I don't know what happened between him falling and me ending up against the wall. I had hit my head against the wall, causing a concussion. I was taken to Anderson Hospital just to check for brain bleed, which luckily they found none. On December twelfth, I was asked to, one of our girls had taken her shoes off when she went out to recess. I was asked to pick up her shoes and when I did, I didn't know nothing about concussion, but my head started spinning and spinning. And so I had to go to my desk and sit down. Well, the teacher got upset. She called in the principal and the principal came in very harshly stating, "Teri, if you cannot do your job, you cannot be on campus." As I tried to explain to her what was going on, she put up her finger and she says, "I don't want to hear it." And so I tried again and again, "I don't want to hear it." Finally, I picked up my stuff and I left. I had been seeing a workers' comp doctor. She's been getting the report. She knew what was going on. So I could not understand her attitude to me. In the meantime, this has been going on now. But what happened is the school district decided to switch from Sierra administrators to Athens administrators. And it took almost two months before my doctor could get an answer from his referrals after sending them week after week after week to see a neurologist and to get other things done. Well, since there was nobody in the office, I finally got ahold of one girl. She was the sweetest thing ever. Her name was Shakira. And she was working for Athens and she...
Please proceed, Ms. Schuman. Keep going.
She started to help me. She explained to me that she was the only one who had been brought over by Athens and that she had a caseload of over two thousand people. So I wasn't going to bring this up to y'all, but today... Sorry. Today, my mailbox, this is only one page of about twelve. And it says, "It's from Cobra." I had been using my time to cover so that I could still get paid. And I had over a hundred and twenty vacation hours, but still, they ran out because we had this two, almost two-month delay trying to get our things processed. And so they, I had been told that your time is up and we're going to place you on leave of absence. And I said, "I'm not going to leave of absence. It's not fair." I said, "We've been waiting on y'all and y'all haven't done nothing." And so today, in my mailbox, I receive from Cobra. Yep, back a Wednesday ago, when they put you on leave of absence, they cancel your health plan, buy the insurance. And some other thing I can't recall right now. But in my mailbox, it's this thing from Cobra. First question is asked on the paper, "Why am I getting this notice?" And you're qualifying, you're qualifying event, employment termination. So I immediately called FMRA because I knew that's who had put me on leave of absence. And she said, "Well, I don't know really. It's just..." She's from me. But I said, "Why is leave of absence considered termination?" And she explained that it's not really termination, but that we have to put you on termination because there's nothing else that we can carry you under. When you get cleared by your doctor, you can come back and you don't have to fill another application, but that we will place you somewhere. So I had talked to a lady two weeks ago who was in here. She called me outside. And I asked her, "Why do I have to use my time when I have a paper that states your case is, has been, Workers' Comp has accepted your case? If they're telling me that, why am I using my time? Why am I on leave of absence now?" And I don't understand. I just wish that somebody here could help me to understand.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Schuman. Okay, with that, I am going to go to item six point oh one and just the announcement of our upcoming meeting on February eighteenth at five thirty here in the boardroom. With that, I'll move to agenda item seven point oh. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. I have trustee Cabazos.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, trustee Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to second the motion.
Okay, I have a first and a second. If you could cast your vote. That motion passes seven to zero. The time is eight twenty. Thank you. That adjourns our meeting.